Be held on February 26, 2019 at 3:00 PM at City Hall East Mezzanine, 72 West College Avenue, for the purposes of considering the following agenda items. We've called the meeting to order and the special agenda items are: A) Consideration of items related to the May 4, 2019 general election; consideration of receiving the certificate of unopposed candidates; consideration of a resolution adopting an order declaring the election canceled; and declaration of electing the unopposed candidates which are SMD I, Tommy Hebert; SMD III, Harold or Harry Thomas as we know him; and SMD V, Lane Carter. Do I have a motion for approval of the consideration of items as just read?
Salute.
That sounds unanimous in itself. Is there a second? Second. And there's a second. Any public comment? With no public comment, we will take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. I now ask for a motion for adjournment.
Subdue.
And a second. Any public comment? If none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Motion passes 7-0. We are now adjourned from the special agenda item. Yes, Mary, are you opposing?
Congratulations, Lane. Congratulations. Hard fought.
Well done. Good campaign.
Good and clean, yes.
Okay, we will now move on to the city council agenda, calling this meeting to order. And it is a workshop. And the workshop itinerary is as follows. It is overview of planning workshop by Daniel Valenzuela. So if you'll start off, Daniel.
I will. Thank you. Mayor, first of all, thank you all again for the -- we do this workshop every year in February, March. And really, the purpose for the workshop is to take a focus, or have focus specifically on those projects that the city council would like for us to key in and focus in on. These are typically items that city council members hear from, the constituents, that it's really important that we're addressing. So again, for the past six years, we've been establishing strategic priorities. For several years, we had five. Last year, we actually brought that number down to three. So with that, what I want to do, just kind of go over very quickly on each one of these items. Mayor, you probably will have to kind of go back and address B in just a little bit. But what I want to do is just go through these. On the financial update, basically what we'll be doing here is Tina will be going through our current financial situation. And she'll also be talking about our expenses, revenues and expenses, but also projections moving forward on what we may be able to anticipate on some of our bigger revenue sources. Of course, our big ones are property taxes, sales tax revenues, and franchise fees. So she'll be addressing that, those items. Next up there is our capital improvement priorities. These are items that are typically very closely tied to the next one, which is a strategic priority. So Tina, again, will address the capital improvement points that we need to take a look at. We do know that on our capital improvement priorities, we have three different funds from last year that we actually keyed in on. That was the general fund, our water fund, and our COSA DC fund. You'll see what I'm talking about later when I address the next, the top three strategic priorities. So number four is just an update. I'll get to that in more detail in just a little bit. And then item five is establishing or confirming our priorities for 2019, 2020. This will really be where the bulk of our conversation will be had as far as city council direction. So again, we look forward to getting that information from you, the direction from you as well. On the financial update, there's three really important points that we need to take a look at. And I'll read these out very quickly. It's important to understand the city's financial challenges and opportunities prior to planning, the planning process. A lot of times, people believe that we have very deep pockets so we can address a lot of the concerns that we get calls from, our citizens. But really, we do have limited resources. Item B, the city has limited resources. It's important to leverage funds toward priorities with the greatest benefit. And this is why we establish our priorities. Again, last year's were three priorities. And it's important to know that these are the ones we're going to, we're going to make sure that we put our funds toward on capital improvement projects. And finally, we'll list, we'll have a list of priorities competing for resources. And we are constrained by affordability. Again, it goes back to what can the city afford and what will give us the biggest leverage, the biggest impact to our community. So moving on, as far as this top three strategic priorities, city council, and again, this is this city council that established these last year. And we went through an extensive workshop to kind of make sure that we addressed these. Prior to that, we have, we had five strategic priorities. Now we're down at the three strategic priorities that we see up there. So we have infrastructure, which addresses streets, drainage, and water. They're not necessarily in that order, but this is how they'll be presented to the city council today. Shane will come up there and talk about streets and drainage, followed by Allison that will be addressing our water. The way they'll be doing this is addressing, or addressing what we've done, just an update from this past year, what we've done in addressing these priorities, and also our needs moving forward. Then we'll move on to economic development. That's addressing development services, development projects. We'll have John James go up there and talk about what they've done to become a little bit more efficient in the way that they provide their service. And that will be followed up by Guy, who will be addressing commercial development and industrial. Then we'll move on to public safety. The chief will be here. Both chiefs will be here to present for the police and the fire department. There are still, they'll be giving us an update in those areas, but also giving us an idea of what they're looking for in the future, what they'd like to have addressed as well. And finally, establishing and confirming strategic priorities. There are several that have been brought out throughout this past year. Some of those that I've mentioned up there are Lake Nazwory development, where we look at sewer infrastructure, and even priorities and projects that some of the citizens would like to see out there as well. Mayor, this is a big one for you. Airport business park development. Again, that's another item that we'll be talking a little bit about today. And then downtown development. One of the items for downtown development that we're working on right now is vacant buildings ordinance. That's something that Teresa's been looking at as well. And of course, these are just some examples, and then any others the city council would like to address. What I would say is, as we consider the others, that once we establish, or the city council establishes the strategic priorities, that we really key in on those priorities and say, okay, if we're going to look at certain capital improvement projects, we want to make sure that they're tied to the strategic priorities that city council has established. With that said, on the next one, Mayor, I guess if you can move on to B to financial? Yes, ma'am?
Tina, I guess you're going to do the financial update on revenue and expenses.
Somebody come get that? Okay, we're going to start out here with our property tax rate. Of course, you remember at a 98% collection rate, the city budgeted about $38 million this year for property tax revenue, with about 4.6 million of that amount going to debt service and the remainder going to maintenance and operations. And that represented a 1.67% increase over the previous fiscal year. And this chart shows the progression of that property tax revenue over the last few years, again, showing that M&amp;O property tax revenue budget at just over $33.5 million for 2019.
How much of that is in increases on property versus new property?
The new improvements was up $50 million, $50.4 million. And for sales tax revenue, our annual average is trending upward. We were down point, 6.8% in February compared with the same month in the prior year. However, the budget for revenue is up $556,000 year-to-date.
Can you tell by the revenue, sales tax revenue, how much of it might come from fuel sales?
There is not a sales tax on fuel. And there is a fuel tax, and we do not receive anything for that.
That goes to the state or the federal?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So if we projected flat, we'd end the year at $638,000. And our sales tax year-to-date, meaning October through February, is up 5.97% over that same period last year. And here's the, next is the chart that you're used to seeing. Again, just showing the month-over-month trends. There you go. Showing your month-over-month trends for 2017, 18, and 19. We did have a request from you, Mayor, to try to look at estimated online sales tax. This is some information on that. We wanted to show you the trend line, and that receipts for online sales are definitely increasing. We get this data from a program called ZAC Tax. And this is the sum of the non-retail sellers. And it does include Amazon, Walmart.com, most of the big names. Some of the names, however, have only one tax ID. And so just as an example, JCPenney, they group their retail store location with their online sales. And so we're not able to pull that data apart yet. And so we're hoping, you know, that that becomes a little more available for more of the corporations in the future. But as it stands, we are at least seeing that growth. And so it is a good story to tell. We started receiving collections for online sales tax in 2015, and it's continued to grow every year since then. So we have here our general fund revenue budget. Shows a good picture. We're at 50% collected at 33% through the fiscal year. I'll let you all look at that slide for a few minutes in case you have any questions.
The slides that you're showing, are there somewhere in some of our background information that we can study those after this meeting?
So all of these numbers that you're seeing on the slide in front of you do tie to our blue book for January 31 of 2019. So there'd be more detailed information.
Oh, okay.
But the total sum ties to our January blue book.
I think we're asking if we could please have the slides sent to us?
Oh, absolutely.
In a document following today's presentation?
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
We ready to move on to?
And other is what?
Alcoholic beverage, right, is that it? It's alcoholic beverage tax, bingo tax, and franchise tax.
We already have an alcohol and bingo tax and a franchise tax up there, so the other has to be something else.
Hold on just a second. We're looking that up. That's on our next slide, the other, so.
And the charges for service, while you're looking for that, on charges for services, where would be the amount, what area are we showing a lack of receiving the charges for services since it's the lowest one up there?
Let me answer your first question, and Kimberly will pull that for us while we're doing that. And other revenue is construction management, legal and real estate, interest miscellaneous, administrative charges, and transfers in. And so transfers in would be your indirect cost, and that's collected from all the other funds to help assist with administrative costs. And charges for services, is that broken out here? So for charges for services, there's a lot of different departments within that. There's a list of about 30 here. So public safety is at 28%. We're 33% through the year. I can at least just give you them by the departmental level, and then if you have more questions, we can go into further detail. Public works is at 7%. Public services, which includes parks and rec, is at 21%. Planning and development services is at 27%. Neighborhood and family services, which is animal and code compliance, is 23%. And that would be all of the charges for services.
So there's got to be some over and above it then, since those are significantly under the 33%?
Tina, some of those seasonal that we're seeing in there as well, so that's what's throwing it off. As far as the number, we're looking at 30.5% versus 33%. So I know you read a couple of them that I was thinking, those are seasonal. So during the summer months, we actually see an infusion of revenues that come in that actually balance some of these numbers out.
Right, especially with parks and rec. Yeah, several of these. The crossing guards is also in there, that's seasonal, and it's actually up at 48% with 33% through. And so you're right, some of those are seasonal.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions on revenue? If not, we'll move on to our expenditures slide. So again, expenditures are looking good. We're at 30% with 33% of the year lapsed.
And we have the revised budget here, so we're under by 8 million. So talk about that.
Yes, ma'am. That is due to carryovers. You remember, we bring in your a carryover budget amendment every year. And so what happens is departments have projects budgeted in fiscal year 18 that they didn't complete. So they request to cover, to carry over those funds to the next year so that they can complete those projects that are kind of in the middle of, in midstream. So if we didn't carry over those amounts, that amount would have fallen to fund balance. So technically, it does fall to fund balance, but then when we bring you the carryover adjustment, we pull it back out of fund balance so that they can complete those projects in the new fiscal year. Does that make sense?
It does. But then do you readjust your year-to-day actuals based off of that? So it doesn't reflect such a big difference?
The year-to-day actuals are what departments have actually spent this year.
Without the carryovers?
And a part of that 8.8 million also, about a million dollars of that is due to the sales tax surplus that we were directed by council to budget at the beginning of this fiscal year for capital projects.
But we had, yeah, we had projects specified for those.
Yes, ma'am.
And they just haven't spent it.
Right. That's right. They may have encumbered the funds, but they haven't actually made the expenditures yet.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions on the expenditure slide? Okay, we'll move on to our chart that shows the general fund and the percent that we received from revenue versus the percent that we pay out for expenditures. You can see here that the amount budgeted for M&amp;O property tax revenue falls short of its intended purpose, which is covering the cost of providing public safety to our citizens. The property tax is about 46% of our general fund revenue budget. Sales tax is about 25%. Other tax is 10%, and charges for services at 13% with miscellaneous at 6.4%. And then for the expenditure budget, public safety is almost 56%. Public works is 13.3%. Public services are at 6.29%, and other at 24.39%. And let's see here. Other tax, and this is where I misspoke earlier, that would have been, where's that? That was the alcoholic beverage tax, bingo tax, and franchise tax, which is that?
This is where you're, where that is?
The other tax on this particular slide.
In other.
Yes.
But you split it out on the other way.
Right.
Okay.
And then in miscellaneous revenue is interest, indirect cost, transfers in, mixed beverage, permits, and return checks. And then the other portion of expense includes planning and development services, neighborhood and family services, health services, and general government.
Okay, so we know that we're consistently 10% underfunded relative to property taxes versus public safety. Not underfunded, but 10% variation between what used to be, what was covered with property taxes versus what we have. And the public safety number, the 55.96, that is inclusive of the eight new firemen and the 10 new policemen?
Yes, ma'am.
Correct? So that's inclusive in that?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Because that is the budgeted number?
Yes, ma'am.
From 2018, I mean, 2019, 18 to 19?
Yes.
Yeah, got to get the years right.
Yes.
Mayor, that gap has grown, of course. You know, as the, of course, it reflects the priority the city council established as far as funding public safety. But over the, over the years, it's gone from 52% up to 50, almost 56% at this point. So that's a good catch.
Okay.
Okay. We'll go to the next slide. We'll talk about hotel occupancy tax revenue. Again, annual average is trending upward. January was, as of January, pardon me, we were over budget for revenue by $217,000. And if we projected flat, we'd end the year at $424,000 over budget. I would say at this point, you know, even though it's looking good and everything that's looking positive, we would caution against trying to use any of that surplus funding until maybe later in the fiscal year when we see a better trend throughout the year.
And what did we plan the hotel occupancy tax, up or down? For, I think we planned it up for the year and the budget?
Last year, we budgeted 2 million, is that right? Oh, that was actual. So what was the budget last year?
I'll tell you in one second.
I think I have my blue book here handy. Last year, we budgeted $1,857,000. And the current year budget is $2,242,000. So yes, up about $400,000.
And on those dollars, how much of the dollars that come into that fund are held back versus distributed based off of the trend line?
The only thing that would probably be held back is any surplus over the budget because for the most part, we've maxed out what we bring in with the different partners that we're contributing to.
So those numbers, although some are percents and some are dollars, how do you figure it's 100%?
It will, it will never be 100%.
Exactly.
Will either be over or short.
So how do we attack that? Because if you're always going to be over or short, the formula doesn't work.
Well, because you have a mix of percentages, like you said, some receive a percent and some receive a budgeted or fixed amount, that's, I think that's at the root of what you're saying that the difference is. And so for those recipients which receive a fixed amount, they won't fluctuate with the trend. For example, we're experiencing the upward trend now. But if they receive a contract amount, their, their amount does not increase. They'll only receive the contract amount.
Sure, if it's a set dollar amount.
Yes, ma'am.
So what we've had to do with that in prior fiscal years is to watch it very closely. And you'll recall, last year, we actually did end up having to amend the revenue budget upward to cover those percentage-based commitments.
When you said it has to be watched closely, you were correct. It has to be watched and, and the budget amended occasionally.
But you're right, and that does make it difficult to budget when you have some fixed cost and some percentage-based, so.
And that is not to reflect negatively on anybody or anything that, or any organization that receives that money, but it's an odd situation when you have some that are dollars and some that are percentages.
You're right.
And it is not performance-based.
For us, a budget is both a projection and an authorization. And when, when the reality exceeds the projection, that can often lead to a situation where you need to amend the authorization.
Can we do that on a regular basis?
Well, as needed.
As needed, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. On the next slide, we just have a chart, a chart showing that trend for hotel occupancy tax. Last year, we did end the year at almost $2.5 million. And we did, again, we budgeted 2,242 this year, so we did budget less than we actually received last year. And that's all we have for the revenue and expense agenda item, unless anybody else has more to discuss or any questions, then we can move into the CIP portion of the agenda.
So based off of the, and you might not have the numbers yet, but based off of the 6.9% decrease in last month's sales tax, do we have by category where that sales tax was deficit?
We actually did look at that with our industry data, and there was no single indicator. It was kind of spread throughout all of the different industries.
So that means no one's spending enough money?
Right. Go buy stuff.
Shop local.
Yes.
Mayor, I do, I do want to point out as well that even though the number is trending upward that we saw a while ago on the graph, that we're up to close to about $500,000 when you look at the online sales for sales taxes, that is still a small number. Percentage-wise, that's what Tina bought a.
At 1.5%, it'd be about 30.
About 1.5%. So really, it's nice to see that trend going up, but it's going to be our responsibility, the city's responsibility is working with our associations, TML and others, to ensure that those monies that are being spent online are making their way here to San Angelo. So even though we are seeing that trend go up there, it's not going up there significantly enough. So that's something that we have to continuously, continuously keep adding.
Tina, based off of the projection year-to-date versus the plan, discuss those two numbers. Number one, how we planned the 2018, 19 budget overall in terms of percent, increase, decrease, or flat versus your current trend line?
Sales tax revenue?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Let me pull that up.
And I think you talked about that just a minute ago, so I know you have those numbers, but I'd just like us to discuss that one more time.
So for sales tax, last year, our actual receipts were $18.6 million. And what we budgeted was $18.4 million. So we did budget down slightly.
The 200,000 versus, so if it's 200,000 divided by the 18.6, so we budgeted it down 1% basically?
Yes, ma'am.
No, wait, that's not right.
I didn't do the math.
10%. All right, no, 1.
I think it is 1%.
Yeah, 1.1, basically, 1.1.
We had a larger number initially.
Then we bought those vehicles.
That's right. We made some adjustments based on needs that we had at city council approved.
I think it would be terrific if this year, if we continue with the sales tax revenue trend, and we hope that last month was a hiccup. But I, as we move forward in just a few minutes with our infrastructure needs, I would like to suggest that we, the council, focus any increased revenue over and above the budget this year towards streets. I think the number one thing that we have complaints about are our streets, and I would like the following two things to happen. One, vote of support to use excess revenue for street repair. And to sort of approach budgeting from, although we won't do it, zero line budgeting, finding additional revenue within the various departments. That would be nice to have in those departments, but not necessary to find additional funds to do street repair, which I think is, in the citizen's mind, the number one issue that they know we're working hard at it, but in fact, we've got a lot out there that needs to be done, and it's the greatest concern that we have. So with that in mind, as we proceed forward on budgeting, let's look for every area and every department that is not a must-have for additional revenue. Opportunities to focus towards streets. Okay, with that said, Tina, thank you for your update. Good job. And we'll move into, oh, you get to be on there again, capital improvement priorities.
Yes, ma'am. So currently, per the charter, we update our capital improvement plan annually. So this will cover a five-year period from 2019 to 24. These items that are included in the plan have to have a total cost greater than $25,000, a useful life greater than three years, and must require six months or more to complete.
Can I ask you how those were determined?
This, it was before my time, but it is set in the charter. And per the charter, these are the requirements. Michael may have some more history on that. Do you recall how that was developed? Some of it's in line with best practices because we have studied, we have the Government Finance Officers Association, and a lot of this aligns with what they, what they recommend as far as the capital improvement plan.
They might have 20 years ago, do they still use this as the guiding document?
Well, the idea is to keep the discussion at a high level, not get bogged down into, are we going to get this kind of pickup or that kind of pickup?
I would agree with that, but then I would also say the fine, that I would assume that on this, a total cost greater than 25,000, you would think would be something that would be total cost greater than 500,000 or 200,000, et cetera. I find the $25,000 number to be a low number relative to capital improvement. And I'm surprised that we don't relook at that really soon.
We actually have, we actually have on our list, next time in the charter-- We actually have, we actually have on our list, next time the charter is reviewed, to make some other changes.
This year.
Okay, so we plan to make other changes to the CIP process, and that's something we'll include in that. I have seen where other cities are using a much larger number, so we'll get out there and research and see what other cities are using and make it a more reasonable amount. We agree with you completely.
Okay, good.
Yeah. Okay, so right now, we have 80 total projects currently underway or proposed to begin by 2024. The total cost of those projects, including prior years, is $575 million. And then we have 88 potential projects we're out in future years that are a total of $265 million.
Is that even realistic to say? That these would be, $575 million worth of projects will be begun by 2024? Because, you know, right now, we're almost in 2020. We're not too far away. So in four more years, let's say, let's give it five years, that we're going to find $575 million?
Our time, though, Brenda. This is prior years, so.
Okay, but then it should be updated. So if it's updated, what would that be?
Well, we include the total cost of a project, whether it was in a prior year or current year or the future year, so that the total cost of the project is reflected in the capital improvement plan. So she, Kimberly's going to try to look up to tell you how much of it was in prior years versus how much we need moving forward.
Yeah, we need a more realistic number there because...
I think we'd be shocked at how big it is.
Well, or, yeah, and then the 88 potential projects, 265 million. So my guess is those 88 potential projects would end up being 125 potential projects, and those numbers would grow because we're only four and a half years away from 2024, and I don't see us finding $575 million past or present in the budget.
So I'll tell you the way that we approached the capital improvement plan this year was to ask directors to only submit projects for the five-year horizon that either they had the funding for and they knew of a funding source, or it had to be done either way in the next five years, and we needed to find a funding source. And so that's all that should be in our plan for that five-year horizon, and the rest should have been moved to future projects. So we, we, we kind of have to rely on the directors to tell us what's realistic.
So these numbers could, as we go through the budget sessions or the budget reviews, these numbers could do, just as I said, some of that 575 will fall away from past, but a large part of it will probably move into that potential future projects, and those dollars will increase. Yes, Tommy, I think you wanted to comment.
Yeah, no, our question, Tina, of, of, it doesn't matter, to Brenda's point or even just a general question, are the, the numbers in the 575 million, are those updated annually so that we're looking at current costs, or are those when they were initially entered into the CIP?
We ask that the numbers be updated every year so that if there are any changes or increases, that they're reflected in the plan.
Okay.
This could be very unrealistic, and I accept that as I say it. So know that I know this could be crazy. But on the other hand, I think that at some point, those numbers need to be numbers that we look at and say, from 0 to 10 years, or from 10.5 to 20, to like to have it down. But just putting those numbers up like that is not a true story and realistic story about what's out there and what is digestible. And timeframe-wise, it has, you know, again, when we say 2020, to begin by 2024, and I don't know. I'd like to break this capital improvement plan down into greater depth. And I think you say you're doing that as you go through the budget sessions, so that's great, and I'm glad that you're working on that.
Yes, ma'am.
So we better understand in the next two years, what we're looking at and hope to have as the top priorities are the next five years. So we can better address, yes, Tommy?
Getting ahead, this may be a question for Shane during his presentation, but let me ask it of Daniel right now. Are, are we going to see a list that, that is categorized in the CIP? These are streets, this is this, this is this, that essentially, right now, as far as we know, makes up the 575?
We have a list of those, that Tina, I mean, in the CIP plan, we do have a list of those. When Shane comes up here, he'll be presenting those, the, what was requested from the Fugro study and how we actually established those priorities. So he'll be going through those, but yes, those are in the CIP.
We did include a draft of the CIP in your background for this meeting, and so you have that available to you, and we'll be bringing it back to you at a later day at a council meeting so that we can discuss it in a little more detail.
But Mary, you're right. As far as, I mean, we look at, really, when you start looking at the 80 projects, so we have underway, so we know the ones underway are already funded, but then when you look at the proposed part of it, it's where you get that crazy number.
Yeah.
You know, how do, how do we fund those, the total of $575 million? So again, as Tina mentioned a while ago, we are looking at this more realistically to really ask the directors, the areas where we actually do have funding or proposed funding, or, as she mentioned, there's some that absolutely positively have to be done within the next five years that we'll have to tackle one way or another.
Yeah, and I think a five-year window is a good window, Billy. Sorry?
I was just going to ask Daniel or Tina a question. On the 575 million in total project cost, does that include some of the streets that are covered by the, the 10-year plan and all?
Yes, ma'am.
Because as I was looking at that background information, and as it was laid out by category, and I looked at the streets, and some of them had dollars that had 2018 by it or 2019 or 2020. So are all of those numbers that I was looking at in the background information included in that 575 million?
If they're intended to be completed within the next five years, yes.
Okay, all right. So that, but that's covered by the, the bond that's already out there.
For streets, yeah.
Some of that is covered by that.
Yes, for the streets.
So that figure is not necessarily...
Well, there is a partial funding source for that figure.
Well, it'd be streets, but you don't have water sewer.
I'm sorry?
Because the, some of those numbers are out there because we know we have the $80 million we're reinvesting in streets, but that is not necessarily water, because that's a separate sewer, which is separate. And if you look at Bell Street, it's $22 million, but whatever, 11 to 12 million of that is water sewer versus street.
Correct.
So, you know, the question mark is, how does that fall?
But haven't we already budgeted for some of that?
We've...
The water and sewer?
Some of it.
Because as you, as you look at, so the 575, to your point, is not an actual number. Something could be maybe subtracted from that? Or no?
Well...
This is projected. I mean, these are projected numbers for out in the future to spend, which include the 80 million, which include Allison's numbers for water and sewer infrastructure upgrades. And so it's a, the 575 is an all-encompassing projected number. We're not necessarily, we're planning intending on spending that 80 million plus that 60 million or 70 million here, 10 million there, 5 million here, and that, all of that equals 575, so.
It covers several funds, basically.
It's, yeah, it covers several funds.
Right, and I, I understand that, but is it 575 million on top of the 80 million?
No, 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 no.
No, it's inclusive. It is inclusive.
Yes.
A combination of fully funded items, partially funded items, and unfunded items.
But it would be nice to have it broken down, you know?
She has.
The past projects?
The past amounts from prior years is $45 million of this amount. Future years, so it's part of the project, but we don't expect to spend it until after the five-year timeframe, 105 million. So that's 150 million of it that we don't expect to spend in five years. I think it's important to point out that probably in the water fund alone, is probably a couple hundred million of that just in water and sewer for infrastructure and, you know.
I would say the Contra River Water Project has included water treatment, wastewater treatment.
Is it in there? Because we haven't, we haven't gone through the CIP for 2019, 20, and the Contra River Project is something we just now approved?
It's in the, it's in the draft of this one. So while you haven't approved this CIP, it is a part of the draft to be coming for y'all's approval. But those dollar amounts, the Hickory Expansion, Lake Nazareth sewer improvements, I was about to say, I probably carry $250 million of...
But we haven't seen those numbers.
No, but we, they were all coming.
And so how did they get in here already?
They're, they're in your, in your background for this meeting. It was in the CIP draft, and so that's why I was saying, at a later date, we'll bring that back for more discussion and more detail.
Not all these projects are actually authorized, fully funded.
That's why I'm asking.
But they're used on the preliminary engineering reports that we've already done, like the Fugro Study, the Hickory Expansion Study. We do have estimated dollar figures for what those projects are going to cost. And a lot of those big items, at least for the water utilities, will be coming to City Council for the next steps and those type of things. But we do put a placeholder in the CIP in the event that y'all want to proceed with those projects.
And putting that placeholder into the CIP is really the first step in doing a project. It has to be, per the charter, it has to be in the CIP for us to do that project.
Okay. That makes sense. So, go ahead, Billy.
No, I was just going to ask, Tina, are we going to get into any of that 135-page background information that?
That's included, yeah.
Because that was really mind-boggling to go through all. Are we going to look at some of the?
That's the capital improvement plan that we, we adopt every year, update and adopt every year. And so we're going to be bringing that, and I have a timeline on the next slide to show you that we'll be bringing that back to council.
Because that's required again by city charter that we approve it by a certain timeframe.
Every year, yes, ma'am.
Right.
Do you want to go to that next slide?
Okay, so we've got that.
Did y'all look at that?
So here's where our timeline is. We plan to have public forums and a survey. March 7th is our online forum, and then March 12th, we have a, an open session public forum at the convention center. We will have a survey open to the public at coastatx.us/cipinput, available from March 4th through 17th, that we encourage our citizens to go and tell us what they would like to see as far as capital improvements are concerned. And then we'll have the public hearing and adoption and discussion with City Council at the Monday, April 1st City Council meeting.
And how are we going to get out to the citizens that that survey will be out there for them to take?
Our public information office is very good about getting that information out through the media outlets, through social media, through all of those available outlets that they have contacts with.
Okay. Thank you.
So this is just a short list of some partially funded projects. We also have a handout for you all that has a longer list of completely unfunded projects that we'll pass out to you. But these are some that directors did want to discuss in this meeting. And so we have the animal shelter rehabilitation, which has an unfunded portion of $450,000. The reconstruction of North Chadburn from Loop 306 to Washington at a cost that's to be determined. You'll recall that we have already funded and approved a portion of that project. City Hall exterior wall waterproofing is still short by about $750,000, and the Fort Contra roof replacement is in need of $155,000 in funding. And we have asked these directors and managers to be here, should you have any questions about these projects.
Okay, let's talk about this. So, so I better understand this slide. So we're saying that these projects are projects that are ongoing as we speak, and there's a difference between what's funded and unfunded? Or these are, tell me what this, what this means, this slide.
What, you were correct in what you stated. They are, they are ongoing projects that have begun, but they still need additional funding in order to complete the project appropriately.
Well, the question would be, if they've already started and the work has begun, and there's a big shortfall in the money, how do you stop midway?
So...
On the project?
I would say these are...
If it's not funded?
They're projects that are being, being done in phases. So for example, you know, with the Chadburn Street, that's being done in phases. We have Phase A, Phase B, and Phase C. Well, we've funded and approved Phase A of that project, but we still need additional funding for B and C. So all of these would be, you know, they're doing the work as they can and as they have funds available in phases.
Okay, but let's go back to the animal shelter. How's that working out?
I think Morgan's here. She'd be happy to talk about that.
Good afternoon. Thank you. I think that that's an accurate representation, is that they're phased in. And so we had a recent discussion with the council with some sales tax surplus money about some specific high priority items that needed to be fixed at the shelter. And y'all funded three projects, specifically our processing room, our garage, and a new garage. And so, and then there was some additional funding that I had harvested and saved that you allowed me to keep that we're trying to address with the general population. It does not fully, so we're able to proceed with internal resources such as our architect and on the small scale, these, those three items that you already funded. So that's an easy way to say that it is a $769,000 project, but we are phasing in and doing small portions of it as we have time. There would be an additional need of $450,000 to really address the major needs at the shelter, including completely overhauling the general population, redoing the floor in that facility, redoing the kennels, dropping the ceiling, making it more noise and sound appropriate, better for disease control, as well as building a big dog barn for our long stay, something that's appropriate for enrichment for those animals, and able to house the number of animals we're having at the shelter. So there, there is an overall need for improvements at the animal shelter. We did bring some three sub-projects, if I could say, to y'all recently that you funded. And so that's how we're able to phase that in specifically for the animal shelter, is there are items that were very clearly could be done, carved out, weren't dependent on the others. But that did not solve all of the issues that this 20-year-old building is facing.
And the metal buildings that are being put in out there, does that solve any of that, or is that, was that in addition to that?
That's in addition to. The, that is a Contra Valley Pause project. It's a public-private partnership. So that, although that brings relief to the facility, I will say this, if an architect, we have done a needs assessment on the facility, they would put a much higher dollar amount on the improvements needed for my facility. We are just asking for the current, the status quo, with the intention that we, we've leased some land to Contra Valley Pause. They are installing an adoption center that will bring some relief to the animal shelter, to the population that we're housing. This is simply to address the most urgent needs that will still be needed even when Contra Valley Pause finishes their construction project.
And when will that be?
I don't know the project details of their item. The lease is such that as long as they begin the project within a certain amount of time, then they're compliant with the lease, and there are the project managers on that. It's privately funded. It, it's not a city-funded project.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from council for Megan? Morgan, sorry. I said Megan, Morgan. All right, thank you. Okay, so the City Hall exterior wall waterproofing situation.
Ron's working the front door. Ron Lewis. Mayor, that, that is the project we recently discussed, where we talked about waterproofing that underlayment behind the stone. And this is, Ron has, Ron, can you tell us how you came up with the 1.2 million?
It was, is, oh, sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes.
It was really just an estimate based on the fact that we're going to have to do a bunch of work. We don't know what the actual will be. As we get into the first task order we had, that will be starting probably the end of March, early April, we'll know a little bit better what the process is and the method to repair and waterproof, and then we'll know how things look. And then as we start coming down, we can do it a little more quickly the next few phases. And it won't be done so quickly because of the scaffolding and, and the process of taking stone off so fast that we're going to overspend the money fast, I promise.
Our hope on that project has been to move it along in phases so, because we don't want to create an operational issue for the building. It also creates a financial issue if we try to do it all at once also.
I think we all, all...
Need to understand that these are all phased projects. There's several different things that are incorporated in the total cost that have been broken down into smaller segments. And with that, now you've got the parts that are funded and the parts that are unfunded.
Ron, once the study is done, we'll have a better idea what the, the cost is going to be, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
And I met with Killas last Friday to work on the first task order. We should have that out in the next week or two. And he's talking to the contractor that's helping with the removal and replacement to see when the timeline would start.
Very good. Well, hopefully it'll be a smaller numbers, but we'll see. Thank you.
I think they have an idea of what the worst case scenario would be.
As far as the cost or the methods?
Cost.
Not really. It's just hard to say, Lane, because, you know, it's just a matter of deconstructing the building's wall, actually. The, the skin, not the wall. The structure's still good. So you're going to just take some off and see what's there. And, and we're pretty sure we're going to see the same thing everywhere, but the way the thickness of the stone varies from lower to higher, and so that will affect the attachment methods because of the weight. And we do know if some stone is, some stone is fractured over time, of course. Natural fractures were in it, and they, as they come down, they may break. They did some gluing last time when they redid the upper parapet on these sections on both sides. And so they can do that. And another option is to take stone from a, a less conspicuous place, if it's in the front, and put the, the matching stone to the front, and then find some replacement that is as close as we can get to it.
Ron has been very good for us.
Stretching dollars, but this one's a little bit out of his control.
Prisoners can't help do this work. Prisoners can't help do this work.
It's a big number.
It is.
Okay, thank you. Are you also here on our Fort Contra roof replacement conversation?
No, but I can talk about it.
Okay, go right ahead.
No, I'm not familiar with it. Rick may be.
Basically, those are after the storm. You know, we had all the roofs need replacement, basically. And so we did receive funding, uh, from our insurance and you, there's the 155,000. It's somewhere between there and 200,000. Uh, the estimated cost for redoing all of those is 880. The 200, as I understand it, or the 155, uh, you can't take that and just use it on one or two roofs. It has to be allocated out percentage-wise as it was for each building. So as they redo buildings, then they can draw upon that. So that's the estimated total for the redo of the roofs.
So let me ask, all right, so we got $155,000 worth of insurance. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
But we have an $880,000 problem? I think we need to relook at our insurance agent. Okay.
You still need the 155.
Okay. Oh, got it.
Are you sure? Okay, so they have 880?
No, they got 650.
880 minus 155.
They got 650.
Okay. Stand corrected.
And Mayor, this-
In a good way, though.
Uh, it's not the insurance issue. It's a matter of what the damage was assessed at the time when it was evaluated by the estimator.
So more time's gone by, some more damage has happened?
Uh, no, no, that's not what I mean. What I mean is when they evaluated the roof damage, that's what they, they did a percentage of what needed to be repaired. It's, it's wooden shingles, you know, most of the roofs. I guess all of them are, the store buildings. And so they don't get all damaged. But you know, you do damage more, taking them off when you're replacing them. The bad ones, you had to take off some more. So they just estimate that and, and, uh, that's not a full roof. It's like, like the whole roof got beat up and everything's cracked up, that would be a whole total roof. And there may be some that had that, but I doubt it was probably intermittent around the small area that, that's on that land.
Well, so I guess the question is, is how many more pages of these partially funded projects do we have?
This is, this is the only slide.
It is, so we're saying everything else we, which is probably not realistic, everything else we have is funded.
No.
Problems.
No, there's a whole list of completely unfunded projects, a list of completely funded projects, and there are some partially unfunded that directors, uh, were not ready to bring before the council at this time. So these were the ones that were left, those that they were ready to bring before the council to let you know that there was a need and that we would need to eventually find a funding source.
I need support also, Mayor. For example, in the, the city hall exterior wall, we have at least several months' worth of existing funding to keep that project moving. So, uh, I don't know what the timing is on the Fort Contra roof situation, and I don't know how soon Morgan is going to need, uh, funding for her next phase, but those project managers regularly talk to us. When they, when the, when the glass starts to get very empty, they start talking. And so they'll be working with us to keep those projects moving along. Pace is the key, is, is one of the keys.
And all of these are in this, uh, CIP plan?
Yes, ma'am.
As part of that 575 million?
Yes, ma'am.
They only move forward as funding approved by council and as contracts approved, also approved by council allow. So they may be in the CIP, but if, for example, on Ron's city hall exterior wa- waterproofing project, it, if he reaches the end of the funding and there's not additional funding, uh, approved by council, it doesn't matter that it's in the CIP. The project stops until-
Sure, money.
-council authorizes a contract and funding to go with it. So inclusion here does not mean it's automatically going to be spent.
Sure.
It's just identified as a need.
Also want to point out that we did not include any of the infrastructure needs in this discussion because we plan to, um-
Yeah.
-tackle those-
Sure.
-further along in the agenda.
Yeah, got it. All right, next slide.
So this is kind of our segue into the next agenda item. I don't know if you want me to go through these slides for water, uh, sewer and storm water before we start that agenda item or after you?
I think we ought to do it together.
Sure.
I think it doesn't make sense to review this now and then have them make a presentation.
Okay.
So if we could do them-
So we'll just go through these slides quickly.
Together, that would be good.
Okay. So this is, um, where we are year-to-date with our water, um, revenue and expenditure. Total revenue's at 29.2% with total expenditures at 27.2% year-to-date. And again, we're 33% through the fiscal year. I'll let you look at this slide for a few minutes or ask any questions. Again, you'll see that revenue under expenditure, that is again due to the carryover process.
That's not big.
No.
And I would assume, well, first of all, we budget relative to last year. So if you had a lot of water where you didn't have, or it was spring versus summer versus winter versus whatever, you would plan accordingly. So water sales are down, I assume, based off of the level of rain that we have received?
The way we actually budget for the water and sewer funds is per the rate study that we had conducted, and we ensure that whatever revenue or expenditures we had in that plan yields enough, um, revenue over expenditure to accomplish what the rate study was put in place to do. But I'll let Allison speak more to the details of that.
We also budget on a normalized year, so while we do sell more water-
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah, on last, last fiscal year, we sold considerable amount more water than we did the prior fiscal year. Um, so really on the five-year average is what ref tell us rate study had modeled. And so it's on a normalized year. Um, and so we did not adjust sales based off last year because we do know that we'll hit the high and low. And then also too, my revenues or water utility revenues are also seasonal in terms of right now, with this October through February time period is a time when people aren't normally watering outside, watering their lawns, those type of things. So we do see more of our revenue coming in, in the spring and summer timeframe. Um, and so we do, I, I don't think that we're worried about being a few percentage points behind tracking with the fiscal year on this one.
Water revenue is extraordinarily seasonal and very much correlated with rainfall.
Well, um, of course, we know about seasonal. And the question mark would be whether the large amount of rain that we received this past year will have an impact on our sales for your budget.
And that's exactly why we do budget on the normalized usage. Um, and so it, it, the, I don't have that volume right in front of me, but I do know that the volume that we estimate selling annually is less than what we sold last year.
And you might not have this number and it's okay if you don't, but I know last year we looked at the conservation, um, program and looked at the huge shortfall relative to what was expected when that conservation plan was put into action. And to say the following, a conservation plan is not a low-income plan, it's a conservation plan, where are we in putting together that conservation plan?
We have been working with, uh, so we've, we're kind of tasked with two items. Bring in one, a conservation plan program, if you want to say, that addresses conservation solely. Um, but also in that discussion, we heard aloud, um, always talking about the, maybe a low-income assistance program. And so we've been working with the other agencies, uh, that already kind of assist with the community in those efforts that do electric bills, gas bills, those type of things. And so we're trying to bring forth an item that will basically take the current conservation program and split that into two different programs.
Good.
One to address low income and one to address conservation. So that could be, uh, conservation programs could also gear towards anybody willing to, uh, participate that wants to reduce their water usage, not necessarily a low-income person.
Right.
So those are items that we are working on.
Cause that conservation plan wasn't ever adapted or considered to be a low-income plan when it was created.
Correct.
Uh, yes, Billy?
On the, um, under revenue on the revised budget, why are we under revenue on, on a revised budget? The 159?
Is due to the carryover process, uh, the budget amendment that we bring to you for carryovers for projects that weren't completed at the end of fiscal year 18. We carry that over and so after it falls to fist, to the fund balance at the end of 2018, and then when we bring that budget amendment to you, we pull it back out of the fund balance. And so it's, it's a net cost to the fund, but it allows those projects that were, um, in progress at the end of fiscal year 18 to be completed in fiscal year 19.
It's a strange thing to look at, Billy, cause you think it's like a negative trend line, not a budget amendment line in this case.
So, and transfers in for 893, what is, what is that?
So I have several divisions. This is the water fund, but we have several divisions within the utility that address both water and sewer sites. So for instance, our customer service, utility maintenance, they are all funded out of the water fund, but they're doing services for both water and wastewater. So that transfers in, um, some of that is, um, the sewer fund funding the water fund for their portion of those employees and those services.
Thank you.
And then you transfer in and out, or out, in to do that?
Yes, we transfer into the water fund, uh, for those divisions.
So the end of the year, it balances out to budgeted numbers. Correct?
I'm not sure I understand your question, sorry.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
At the end of the year, it'll be 100%.
Yeah, that's my point.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Cause you wouldn't budget that unrealistically is the point. So it's just a matter of how it's booked.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I look at water sales and then I see billing and collection. What's the billing and collection?
So because the water fund, like I talked about with, and Tina can correct me if I overstated anything, uh, but billing and collection, because the utility does the billing side of things, such as the stormwater account shows up on that, um, the trash service shows up on the water bill. We're, uh, customer service is facilitating those, uh, that billing system. And so stormwater pays, uh, the utility money to, basically for those services. So does the trash, or trash fund. So those are the billing and collection revenues that we receive.
Again, it's just a matter of billing.
And also, I think delinquent charges is a part of that.
Have we had any, uh, reaction from the co- new company that we hired for collections? Have we had any uptick in collections since they started or are they just barely getting started?
I was going to say, they're barely getting started. We've got the contract executed, we're getting set up in their system. So as far as reach out to customers, uh, or that customers that we've sent them, we're still in the process of getting that all set up, how they like in their system. So we haven't contacted any customers through that program.
All right, um, go ahead, next slide, I think.
Next up, we have the water reclamation fund at 37.3% uh, total revenue budget and at almost 24% of their total expenditure budget.
Then you might, just to start with, do the under 2 million 9?
Again, that's due to the carryover process so that projects that were completed at the end of fiscal year 18 can, uh, continue and progress into fiscal year 2019.
And would, is that 100% of that number? Cause it gets confusing if it's a big part of it, but it's not 100% of it so that we don't better understand what truly is under.
Kimberly's going to look up-
Okay.
-what's in that amount.
Cause on this one, that's a large number, so we need to know what percent is truly-
I expect that it would be a large number because Allison did cover, carry over a lot of her capital funds, um, in anticipation of the College Hills project.
So this would also have Bell Street included in this project. So while we have encumbered those funds for that project, they haven't all been spent. Um, so I would say a portion of that is both for the College Hills dedication as well as Bell Street.
Okay.
But if you didn't include the carryover process, we, as a part of the rate study, we are contributing to fund balance, uh, so revenue would be over expenditure. So probably all 2.8 million dollars is contributed to the carryover process.
Okay. Cause that's large compared to the other numbers. So that answers that. And that's also the reason you're only at 13.9% on your capital expenditures?
Yes, so that is in our operating fund, but we also, for College Hills, haven't started that project, so those funds haven't been encumbered or even paid out yet.
Okay.
Mayor, we did confirm that that is all due to carryovers.
Okay, so we better understand that number.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so any other questions from council on this slide or would you like to move forward to the next slide? Let's move forward to the next slide.
And this is our final, um, revenue and expense slide for stormwater. Um, stormwater, uh, revenue at 32.4% and their expenditures at 13.9%. Again, a negative number there. They did do, um, carryovers for Avenue P and for the Sunset Lake project, I believe, as well as a few other smaller items. And so that amount, again, is for projects that were planned in 2018, but were not completed before the beginning of 2019.
Well, I thought the sunset was planned in 2019 budget, not 2018 budget.
New over expenditures is so small every year that we have to carry it over a lot of times, multiple years to actually get enough money to complete the project.
Okay, so it was initiated back then and are you accumulating?
Yeah, but we're accumulating, accumulating, accumulating. We finally build up enough money to, to actually execute the project and then, then we can spend it once we actually have the funding available, so.
I see, okay.
But we like to make sure that we capture it there so it's seen in the capital project and not just seen like we're building some great big huge fund balance for no reason.
And I would also point out with this fund that they did originally budget revenue under expenditure at $336,000 in anticipation of equipment replacement costs. So 336,000 of that amount is, is, was intended to draw down fund balance for, for those needs.
Which is essentially, they saved up for these anticipated equipment purchases and this is the year they needed to make them, and so they needed to spend that savings, which is nice to spend savings instead of debt.
Okay.
Okay, and this is our final, um, finance slide, so unless you have any questions.
So, um, that means then that we're going to move into the top three strategic priorities, right?
That is correct. Mayor, and again, I just want to emphasize again that this was the priorities that were established last year, that we went through the process. And also, uh, that we're looking at infrastructure, economic development, and public safety. Two of them cost money and one of them actually brings money. That's economic development. So again, um, each one of the presenters will talk a little bit about, uh, where we are, just an update, and then kind of give us an idea of what they need moving forward as well.
Okay, so that must mean you're on, Shane. We haven't-
That, that means me.
That means you.
All right. Got to go the right direction, okay. Uh, kind of going back just a little bit on, uh, bring us up to date where we are now. Back in 2015, uh, we had, um, a, a streets analysis study, uh, conducted by Fugro, uh, Roadwear, Inc., and, uh, basically they analyzed every, every road we had in town at the time. So they drove over it, they measured it, and gave us basically a, uh, uh, a, a, a starting point so we know where we are, what we need, and how to, you know, and give us an idea where we need to move forward. And so we, we all knew streets were bad, everybody knew that. But we wanted to know how bad each street segment was and, and where they were bad at and, and what they, and what we needed to start moving forward. And so they did that, created the analysis for us. Uh, they came in and, uh, with that study, basically prioritized our rehabilitation needs, what we need on each street segment and where. And, uh, of course, we also, uh, and, and through that, we were looking at our pavement condition index score, uh, which takes into how rough it is, what the rideability is, how many cracks are in it, you know, or is it, or do we see significant base failures, you know, the whole things. And it was a rating system all the way from basically, um, 10 was like a Bell Street and then 100 would be a brand-new street that we just built today, you know, yesterday. And so that's kind of how their rating goes. And so- Uh, we just did them, okay, so that's good.
Well, it is now, but it wasn't when that was done.
It wasn't then.
No. But it wasn't done when the study was done.
That's correct. It was not done when the study was done. So, but you know, we do have a few of the residential streets that, you know, as developers build, build out new subdivisions, that those brand-new streets are, are considered very high up in that ranking, so. But we did, we did, uh, had those guys come in, um, and then with that, we, um, as we, as we did that, you know, they, they looked at, at what we had and, and, and our scenarios and we said, okay, uh, council has given us, uh, X number of dollars, 3.5 million dollars or, you know, roughly approximation of that much to, to do a seal coat program for a once every eight-year seal coat program. Uh, we also, uh, during the Fugro study, we were playing around with a bonding scenario. How much money can we allocate towards reconstruction, rehabilitation of our roads? And so as we did that, we were able to give them a number, which was our 80 million over 10 years, our number for them to look at. And basically, it's a $16 million issue every other year. So with that...
And that's streets only, that is not water and sewer, that's just streets only, just to be clear.
That is strictly streets only, yes. And so with that, they came up, and they were able to, not only, one, give us the overall condition of our streets in, in the entire study, but also give us a, a listing of our priority, you know, what they believe the priority streets that we should address within, or where we should start. You know, and those were based on, you know, traffic, traffic loading, how, you know, average daily traffic on a roadway, what the, what that street was considered was an arterial, a collector, you know, how many cars were on it, and, and the condition it was in, and what it would need within that, and what it would, where we could get the most bang for our dollar for the 80 million over 10 years. And so that's, that's what they did, and they projected for us. But I wanted to kind of show you, this is a, this is the ugly slide. And back when Elizabeth Grindstaff was on, on council, right after this study was, was conducted, she asked, she asked me one day what, you know, because we told them that we didn't get this way overnight, our streets didn't get this way overnight, that we were severely underfunded for a lot of years. And she said, well, what's the cost of doing nothing? I told her 494.8 million is the cost of doing nothing. So this is, this was our backlog in 2015, when they conducted the study. They said, we need 494.8 million dollars today to bring our streets up to an acceptable PCI score, which would be in that 70 to 75 range. And so when you, when you look at that, I mean, that's a lot of money. If you project that out today, based on inflation, you're looking at that at about $554 million. So when we start talking about lots of money, and we're talking about that 575 million that Tina was talking about early, earlier, you know, there's a, there's a, there's a big spot out there that we could, that we can put even more than that 575 million into, so, looking at that. And of course, we did have the bond funding, so we are, you know, we're taking little bites out of it at a time. We do have the annual allocation in our O and M budget for seal coating, for crack sealing, for pothole repairs, some minor, minor repair work and minor construction work. We have a little bit of money set aside in our annual budget for that. And so as we're, as we're going through, you know, again, we're chipping away, we're, we're, we've started, we've got a good starting place. And it's one of those things that, because we were going nowhere before, so at least we started, that, you know, it's a positive story, you know, we're doing good, we're getting started. I think we all know, especially with the last couple of years, we've had the, especially this last fall, we had all this rain, potholes are popping up everywhere. And even, and even back then, when Fugro was here, and we told them, we told them how much funding that we had intended to put into our streets program, and what we were gonna do from where we were, they said, that's great, but that's not enough. You're still gonna continue, your PCI, your streets are still gonna continue to decline. Based on their numbers, they were estimating that we'd probably be, go from an average PCI of 45.5 then, to somewhere in that 39 to 40 today, is what they would consider our PCI score. Based on the rainfall, based on the potholing, I'd say they're right. I'd say they're very much correct. So they did state at the time, back in the day, that they believed, looking at all of the data that they had on our streets versus the data that they've collected in all the other cities that they've done this for, that if we were wanting to see real improvement, real progress, that you would probably need an operating budget of 11 to 12 million dollars annually to start seeing real progress. So, which is...
Versus the 8 million that we basically are spending.
Which, well, yeah, or my...
Annually, because you're doing 16 million every...
16 every other year, plus my, and he's talking about my annual operating budget.
Pays ago.
My annual O and M budget would need to be 11 to 12 million. And of course, at the time, I think my O and M budget prior to that was about 3.5 million. So we have moved that up to a little over 6 million, so we're, I mean, we've come a long ways. But again, to start seeing, you know, based on their estimation and what they told us back then, to really, for us to really start seeing progress over time, you know, we've still got a ways to go in that O and M cost, to start looking at, at, at moving forward in that.
When we did the bond funding of 80 million over 10 years, this is a financial question, so basically, do we pay interest only for X amount of years, and then we start paying down the 80 million, but we only take X amount every, like 16 million every two years out of the 80 million? So what would be the issue if we said, okay, we need 16 million? I'm just throwing numbers out here, so don't, this isn't a proposal, this is not my proposal, but, well, this is just throwing ideas out here, so. And she said, she said, what if you did 16 million every year? What would that do to negatively impact finances, budgeting? And would we even be able to do that relative to contractors, to engineering, to whatever? So I'm not saying I'm proposing that, I'm just asking, what are the issues attached to that, so that...
Well, just so you know this one, let's say to double your O and M budget, Shane. What, is that gonna be part of your presentation? Are you gonna get to that? How to, how to start increasing your O and M budget to address this? Is that, are we getting ahead a little bit here?
You're not, not necessarily getting ahead of me right now. We have, there, there, well, I have a, there's, there's a lot of things to talk about here today, but, and we can start looking at into the future, but I, I don't necessarily know that Daniel wants to start delving that deep into this today.
And we can't, it's too deep, but I just...
I would say financially, that's not sustainable at this point in time with our current property tax rate. We're relatively maxed out at our 9.36% that we allocate to the debt service portion for property tax.
Mayor, a big part of looking at the bond funding at 80 million over 10 years was, we were very mindful that we, at the time, we didn't want to affect the tax rate. We want to make sure that we kept it at 776, and it's been that way for over a decade now. But we've been looking at, at that number. And as Shane mentioned a while ago, heck, when I showed up here about six, almost six and a half years ago, I looked at the budget, they had allocated $680,000 for streets.
And that's probably a lot from what they did the previous years. My point is, 680 was that year, but what did they do the year before? Before you came, the two years before you came, the three years before you came.
And I think the problem, of course, it does go back to, and, and that's a past, you know, deferred maintenance happens with all cities, you know, a lot of cities that look at the short term and think, we're gonna save money this year, not realizing that you're gonna end up paying 10 times, 15 times the cost when this, when this, when a street actually crumbles and it falls apart on you. But we're trying to make up some ground right now, and I know that we hear a lot from citizens that, and we, I feel the pain, because I would like, we'd love to be able to do a lot more right now, but we are tackling quite a bit more than what we were doing just several years ago. We just want to make sure that we do plan moving forward. We can double, right now, we can't do the 3.5 million to 7 million dollars, because that would have to be pulled from the general fund from somewhere, you know, so it'd be really difficult. And of course, if we doubled up on the bond funding, that, that would affect our tax rate, so.
But I just want that elephant out in the room, so that we don't mislead anybody in this presentation and conversation, because you're taking a look at a huge big number, and knowing that we're tackling the best financially that we can, not to make people believe that we can just vote to say, double that amount, and we can do it, because financially, we can't do it.
So the, from, my question would be, Daniel, when will we start talking about a plan to, to start moving that number up?
Well, I mean, we're, we're, this is the starting point, you know, and it goes back to, we already know that last year, you guys had these three, these three priorities. I mean, I think that, quite frankly, I don't see them changing this year, but we'll find out in just a little bit. But really, it's just city council, you know, digging their heels in and saying, this is really important for us. We want to make sure that we address this as much as possible. I, I think the problem here, though, is, it's still a funding issue, you know, where do we pull those monies from? We can plan moving forward. What, what do we do to increase the revenues coming in? The mayor often talks about economic development, but that doesn't happen overnight. You know, we can do everything we can to increase our values, thus are the, the monies that are coming into the city. But that's a long-term type of a situation, that we just have to continue working and working diligently.
The only real opportunity is for continued growth, economic development, that brings more money from a sales tax revenue, as well as a property tax revenue to the table, because once you do that, there's more, we can prioritize those revenues towards the streets. But until you have that revenue stream here, you are where you are.
So really, what we end up doing is prioritizing those monies toward those projects that make the biggest impact to our community. Shane mentioned as far as those streets, those roadways that are heavily used by, you know, as far as traffic by our citizens. But those are the ones that we key in on, and try to make sure that we, we address those before we address some that aren't used as, as, as often as those. But again, it's just, it is a major challenge. We've, we've made some really good headway as far as addressing and raising the budgets that we need to get us to address even what we have on the, on the screen right now. Yes, we need more money, but that's something that we're gonna have to plan out and work through.
I have another financial question. The study was done in 2015, and they helped list, gave us a list of priorities on streets. That has probably changed from 2015 to now. So do we periodically look at our list and check those roads? Because some have deteriorated faster than others because of, I'm sure, more traffic, you know. Do we look at that and, and shift those priorities around? Because, you know, as the mayor started out, that's probably the number one telephone call and email that I get is on, you know, what are we gonna do about this street or that street? And, and some of them that I drive are worse than others, so do we?
We do. We have, of course, the list was, and I can actually, if everybody wants the list, I'm passing around. Here is year, year one through year nine, here's the projects as they stand today. These have, these have been rearranged and, and, and reprioritized a little bit. One, as funding becomes available, and two, as we do see roadways start deteriorating faster than others, we do actually adjust this. We haven't necessarily pulled one of these roads off and replaced it with another road. Most of these roads all, within this, for the most part, are in poor condition. But a lot of it has to do with road usage, road type, and, and what we can do to maximize our dollars within the, within the project itself. Whether we're talking about a mill and overlay, whether we're talking about total, or a total reconstruction, trying to maximize our dollars that we have within that 80 million to, to do the most good on the, on the most number of roads. You know, we had, and we do have some roads in town that are, are smaller roads, local roads, that have completely fallen apart, that are in this terrible shape, they're as bad as Bell Street. But we don't necessarily have them on the list, because there's so few cars that drive on them daily, because of the population density, because of other things, that they're not on this list. Even though they're in really horrible shape, they're not on this list, because we're, we're not affecting the maximum number of people that we can affect with our dollars.
And if, if I'm off base, I'm sure the words will come this way, but I haven't heard anything that tells me we're doing anything to get ahead of this curve. I got it, the money's not there, I under, I hear all that. But how are we, as a council, going to get ahead of this? The conversation here is not, we're talking about maintaining what we've got, that doesn't move us down the road any. We have got to start talking about, how are we gonna get ahead of this? Are we gonna be further behind five years from now than where we are right now? I, I haven't heard how we get ahead of this. How do we get ahead of this?
We're worse off today than we were 18 months ago, because of all the rain that's happened, thank the Lord, all the rain that's happened. We've got more potholes and less people to take care of those. Those are the calls that we are getting every day. When are you gonna take care of this pothole? I mean, we struggle. So I understand, and, and Tommy's right, I don't know where we, how we're gonna get ahead of this particular game, because we were so far behind when we started. But we, I think we need to find a way. I, I, and, and I understand that, that when you take a look at where the most money is in any budget, it's in salaries. But we can't even address the potholes today, because there's so many of them, and we have so few people working on them. So how are we gonna get ahead of the curve? I agree with Tommy.
At some point, we gotta talk about, here's what we're, and it's gonna be painful, people. It is going to be painful to have the conversation. But we have got to start talking about, what are we gonna do to address the problem? We're, we're talking about taking care of problems from 20 years ago, and we're not talking about, I haven't heard anything about, okay, we're spending 80 million bucks, how are we gonna take care of those streets? Once we get through that 10-year cycle, they're, they're gonna be, start getting back to where we are right now, where they were 10 years ago. So folks, we got to start talking about this. I know, I'm gonna sound like a, a, a drum that's just not gonna go away. I've tried to kind of lay back on this, but we have got to start talking about this. I don't know, I don't know what we're gonna have to do, but you talking about digging in your heels, Daniel? I'm digging in my heels. How many times have you...
I'm up to here right now. It'll take drastic measures, Tommy, that's what it's gonna, it's gonna take.
Okay.
You know, so we're hearing salaries, we're hearing, you know, so if we're talking about really making a huge impact, if in fact, streets are the most important, then we have one or two things we have to look at. Increase our revenues, or decrease our expenditures. Are you talking about painful? Then you start looking at services, and start trying to figure out exactly what can we cut, eliminate, in order to make this happen, to reduce those expenditures. What can we do revenue-wise? Are there other revenues that we're not looking at, that we could look at? What do we do to increase those revenues? So there's a lot, I mean, but again, you talk about painful, it would take a lot of pain. And I'm up to here right now, though, that as far as the strides that have been taken to this point, you know, I respect what staff has done to this point.
Absolutely.
Because the, the, you know, the, I think that the, the ball was dropped years and years and years ago. Yeah, I wish that we could have continued doing what this city is currently doing right now, because it could have taken care of a lot of the issues that we're facing. But if it falls on this city council, on this administration, then it'll take some very drastic measures. If you really want to double up on how much money we're funding, then it'll take, okay, what are we willing to cut? And what are we willing to do to increase those revenues?
I would, I would say, let's, let's start talking about a plan. And it, it's not gonna be a 10-year plan, it's not gonna be a 20-year plan. It's likely gonna be a 30- or 40-year plan, that most of the people that are sitting in this room, that plan will change a dozen times or more over the next 30 to 40 years. But we have got, it, to, what are some of the most basic things that the citizens expect? Streets, public safety, water. We got to start talking about the streets. We, we've, we're kicking that can down the road.
And so is every municipality in this country. We are not unique in that, and that is the one thing we share with people we wish we didn't share. But every city in America today, every state in America has postponed infrastructure expenses. They haven't done it. So we're not unique in that, but what we are responsible for is being fiscally responsible to the citizens of San Angelo. And that also means developing a plan of action. And so as I suggested, when we started this meeting, that any excess revenues that we have this year needs to be focused towards streets, let's hope it's a million five. We got, what, 500 and some thousand, Tina, now, 550,000 if there's no other negative? We've got, that's number one. And number two, we've got to push forward on economic development. You know, from the beginning, I have said the following, we've got to get the commercial, we've got to get the industrial base built up, because that is gonna be the secret to higher wages, better jobs, more property tax and sales tax revenue. If you take a look today at Tom Green County, our real property commercial value is 886 million, industrials 48. You know what Midland's is? 2,009,000 on commercial and 551 million on industrial. We've got to build that piece of our base up. And when we can do that, then we can start reducing the pressure that we put on the residential citizens of this city. But we have to, and it's unfortunate that in past years, we, the city, council, mayor, citizens, whoever, economic development partners, we're not focused on growth commercially and industrial, and we've missed huge opportunities. So there's a lot of issues here. Missed opportunities, unfortunately, not enough money to do these projects. But we're not gonna make money happen overnight. And what we've got to do is make the best darn decisions we can make with the money we have. That's what we have. And to your point, Tommy, we have to have a plan to see what it would take to bring some of those projects forward, more forward, but we won't resolve that today. But we must do it. It's gotta be a priority to do it.
I could bring you a plan, but you probably are not gonna like it. I, I could. And it would take a lot of, as I mentioned a while ago, a lot of drastic changes. But again, I'm not sure that's something that our citizens are willing to...
We gotta start the conversation. We're not gonna get out of the rut that we're in.
You know, today in Midland, they, 37% of their property taxes is residential. Ours is 56%. Does it all.
High-level question, not dealing with financial. May I ask it at this time, and then we'll just can move on maybe? But I know, for instance, the Concha Street project, we were able to get some state funding through a grant. What determines whether we can get a little bit of money from state grants? Is it the attachment to a state highway?
Correct.
So that if we did some of the projects on, say that, you know, underpass or overpass Loop 3 or... Loop Three or Six of Houston Art, we could apply for state funding?
Well, part of that grant, Billy, was also a bicycle path grant, and that's how part of that came up, because it was TechStop money, and it was really, uh, money, correct, Rick, that was a bicycle path described?
Some of it, we're able to, to get through trails, so even safe routes to school, where you're putting in a sidewalk next to it, those kind of things, or sometimes attaching a designated bike path to the, to, to a dual-purpose lane.
Yeah, the, 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 the Concho, on the Concho Street one, it was specifically because it was tied to a state structure. And so, the state was able to come in and, and pay for all the improvements that are within their right-of-way and on the state structure, which, in that case, was fairly substantial, uh, for, for that project. Uh, when you start talking about the, the Chadburn and where, and the, the Chadburn project, uh, it was, it was tied to pedestrian elements, whether that's bicycle or, or, or walking, uh, tying those things in for improved pedestrian abilities. Uh, MLK was the same way, uh, when we did that, we had the large grant from TechStop on, on MLK, uh, drive. We were having, it was, uh, bicycle and pedestrian elements was, uh, the portion that we received from TechStop to help, help fund those, portions of those elements.
Is that pretty much a given, or, um, that we can get that grant money if we tie to a state route?
Changing the answer too, but it, they're so specific on what they're allowing you to do, so we really look for those opportunities wherever they present themselves, but, you know, they're really tied to some specific state criteria.
Things that weren't in your vision of doing them in order to qualify for the grant, so you put in things that you go, would've been way down here on the list, but because you got the grant, you gotta do it. So, it ties your hands as much as it gives you an opportunity, unfortunately.
Unfortunately. That's great. And the only thing, the only other portion on this slide that, that, that I wanted to just bring up, and of course, again, it's, it's the ugly big elephant in the room, is that the price of doing business continues to go up, uh, as, as, as we've seen over the years, and from twenty, twenty fifteen, we've seen a thirty percent increase in our seal coat costs. So, um, our, the monies that we do have are, are starting to shrink, uh, and so, again, just wanted, again, to bring that up, make sure everybody's aware of that as well as we move forward. But, uh, what, what have we done? Let's look at what we have done, uh, and what we're gonna get done, and, and the, and the direction we're heading. Uh, one of our internal projects that we used our operating, uh, some of our operating funds for, was the temporary improvements on Foster Road, where we went into the low-water crossing and actually built that up to help the water, most of the water go under the road instead of over the road. Uh, I know that we are still getting some phone calls from residents out there, uh, because it's not the permanent fix, it's not the big fix, uh, but again, the big fix is, you know, a three to four million dollar number versus, uh, I, what I did was about forty-five thousand dollars, so...
Well, and the reality is, is the fine, we got a hundred-year rain, so the flooding that happened was unusual. But I think there's, when we talk about temporaries that relate to Foster Road, what I'd like to see us look at in the budget, um, this year is not the three to four million dollar project for Foster Road, but the building of the berm that would help direct the water into the Concho River. And if we could do that before we worry about the project that's bigger and bolder than that, I think the number one thing most people are worried about is the flooding, and if we can direct that water to the Concho River by building a berm, it would, I don't know how much that costs, but it could be a temporary, I mean, it could be an initial help, huge big help, before we get to the road itself, and that would make a lot of people happy, if we can look at that.
We, we, of course, one, we have been working, hopefully, with, uh, people upstream of that, uh, of Foster Road to work on some retention issues up there. Of course, when you see the rainfall that we saw this last, this last fall, uh, it's even gonna overpower that. And as we move across, looking at the berms, we have had some initial contacts, uh, with the private property owners in that area to look at, uh, act, uh, an easement to allow us to hopefully redirect that water so it doesn't spread as much down there in that lower, lower area, and we can direct it into the river. We have started having those conversations, uh, with the property owners to see if we can acquire easements in that area, so... But again, moving forward, and we got that accomplished. Again, it's, uh, it's as much for emergency vehicle access as anything, but, uh, since it is just a one-way in, one-way out, but again, uh, most major, or most normal rainfall events, we will keep the majority of the water, if not all of the water, underneath the road now, so...
Thank you.
Uh, and so, we, we have completed that. As we start moving forward, we start moving into our bonding projects, or our bond projects, uh, ten-year bond projects, um, we have MLK, um, Southland over there by, uh, the Sams and the, in the Walmart, that's been, those two have been completed. College Hills south of the loop has been completed. Uh, of course, Bell Street, uh, the, the great big one, uh, is gonna be ongoing for a while still, uh, making great progress on it. Uh, the concrete that they've already poured looks really, really good, they're moving, moving along at a, at a, at a clip better than I really thought they would in that area. So, uh, that's really looking good. Of course, Concho Street, they've just started, uh, it's in progress, of course, it'll finish up a lot quicker, uh, but, uh, again, it's started, and so, we're, we're working diligently on that moving forward. Coming into, uh, coming into, um, the next phases of it, where we're at as far as, uh, projects that haven't started yet, but we're, we're in design, Southwest, uh, of course, we have Phase A and Phase B on Southwest, so, uh, Phase A is actually currently at a hundred percent, and we are, uh, working with the purchasing department right now on the bid documents, trying to get those out on Phase A. Phase B, uh, we have actually moved up from, um, this is one of the ones that we've actually moved. Uh, Phase B was originally Year Nine, we have now moved it into Year Three and moved, and we've pushed the Gleno one back because Southwest has become a, a lot worse shape than, than the Gleno one has. We do have some issues right there on Gleno, right at the loop, uh, from Mercedes into the, into the loop, that's just really bad, but we believe, hopefully, we can keep that area together, um, a little better than we could Southwest. Southwest has really become a major issue, so, again, we have moved that up in the schedule, so, uh, to your point that you asked earlier, so... Looking at that, uh, North Chadburn, um, all the way from US Highway sixty-seven all the way up to Forty-third Street, we're sixty percent design. Um, Chadburn, um, we are just kinda in that process of working in the downtown Phase A, uh, so we're still in that process, kind of at the early beginning stages of that. Uh, Johnson Street, um, in-house design, we are at sixty percent, uh, on that. Jackson Street, in-house design, uh, and that's just between the Knickerbocker and the railroad, that, that section right there, where we see tons of turning movements, and we're, and we're actually with Chick-fil-A going in there, with Kane's Chicken going across the street, we've seen a, a significant uptick, uptick in traffic accidents and traffic congestion right there. I get multiple phone calls a week on that intersection, so, uh, we are, uh, in the process of, of getting that one, uh, in design. And then, today, I'm gonna stop at College Hills, uh, because I did, I did give y'all the ten-year list, and so y'all can look through that to kinda see from Year Seven and Year Nine, kinda what those look like in the rest of Year Five. Stopped today at College Hills, 'cause this is where we stopped actually in our design. And, uh, and, and I'm also stopping here, 'cause this is where the other big elephant that's gonna jump out and, uh, cause people to, uh, get ugly with each other or me, so... But, uh, a- as we start looking at College Hills, and we've started the design phase, and I'm talking about drainage, which is our other priority, that, that council established last year, and we start talking about drainage. Uh, thus far, in Bell Street, and, uh, you know, and of course, we, we were able to, the drainage issues that were in Bell Street, because it was such a fairly minimal fix, we were able to incorporate that fix within the design process. Uh, we started the design process on College Hills, and of course, I, everybody knows the drainage issues that we have on College Hills, not only from, from the, from the loop to the Arroyo, uh, and, and where we stand so much water in that area, but also when we look at the Arroyo, uh, we have the north and we have the south, uh, south forks of the Arroyo that run, run through College Hills right there, and so we would start looking at drainage. Drainage has really, this one, this one has really set us back. When we started looking at it, and what can we do, 'cause I don't think, I don't think the councils nor the citizens would, would want us to spend twelve million dollars to repair the, the water sewer and street infrastructure on College Hills Boulevard and still have to drive through water, or not be able to drive through water. So, what do we do? We started looking at, we started having them look at, what are we gonna have to do to fix the drainage issues within College Hills? Well, it got crazy in a hurry. Um, and, uh, I don't know if y'all, if y'all really wanna go into this depth or not, but we can.
Well, can I just ask one question before?
Sure.
Yeah, it's, uh, Avenue P, where, where is it in this whole thing? 'Cause it's, I guess it's a drainage issue, not, is it not a street issue, so...
Avenue P is, is, is strictly drainage, but we're at ninety-five, Russ, we're at like ninety-five to almost a hundred percent on design plans on that, so we are, we're just about ready to go out for bid.
Okay.
Um, so, we're just about there. And of course, those funds have been, those were set aside quite a few years ago, uh, for that, and so, we've just been carrying those funds over year after year for that project as well, too, so... Y'all, I can't change, pass them around. So, I hope I gave y'all enough. But, and these are, these are kinda complicated maps, but it kinda, it's gonna hopefully, um, kind of explain to y'all the, the process, um, or kinda what we're looking at as we're, as we're looking at this. Hope I gave y'all enough. Okay. But as we started the, as we started going through the design, the design process and the design phase, we started looking at, at our, at our drainage issues that we have, not only one with, with College Hills, uh, or, within College Hills from the loop to, to the Arroyo, which is, which is one issue, and then the Arroyo is another issue, but they, un- unfortunately, both, they both combine at the Arroyo, and they make even bigger issues. So, as we look at it, uh, these are, these are the maps, and you kinda pull them apart, but you look at a two-year event, a five-year event, a ten-year event, and a twenty-five year event. And you can see the inundation maps of just what the Arroyo itself does within those. And as you start looking, and if you wanna just, if you just wanna turn back to the, the last one is, is overkill, but this is the twenty-five-year flood, flood map, on the very last one on the back. And you can, and you can see the, and you can see the light blue shaded areas, the light blue shaded areas is the inundation map on a twenty-five-year event, and how it backs up and how it floods those areas, and, and the portion of the College Hills that it takes right there. And so, as we start saying, okay, what are we going to do to try to keep College Hills from flooding because of the Arroyo backing up and, and coming over the Arroyo right here? We can see that we're gonna have to start, the purple would be bridge structures, which is, right now, we just have, basically, we don't have bridge structures, we just have some, uh, underground box culverts that allow the water to flow under the road at, at its current elevation. So, these would actually be either bridge structures and/or extremely large box culvert structures. And then, we start seeing the oranges where we've had to raise, we would have to actually raise significantly the elevation of College Hills Boulevard. And then, you start seeing all the green lines as it goes back up into the neighborhoods, that's where we have to start raising neighborhood streets, but, to join in and to bring those in, and to bring those streets back up to that elevation again. And so, when we got to looking at this, and the price, it is mind-boggling, and the price ta, and the price tag to do just the drainage improvements, if, if we were gonna do, oh yeah, we, just the drainage improvements alone on, on the twenty-five-year would be roughly seventeen million.
One seven.
One seven million, yes. And so, one, we believe that, one, that's, that's not fiscally responsible at all, to look at only improving one roadway, the drainage on one roadway for seventeen million. And so, that's kinda what, a- as we moving forward and we're talking about drainage, what, what kinda, I wanna bring up to you, 'cause we started going, okay, what can we do, because this is not a feasible plan? The other portion of this is, and the other portion of the plan is to, and, and that doesn't fix the drainage going from College Hills or from the loop to the Arroyo. That just addresses the Arroyo, the seventeen million. I need another five million to address the drainage issues from the loop to the Arroyo. Now, granted, that five million is, that, that's about as, that's about as good as we can do. I mean, on that side of it, that five million, that's the most responsible, the best way that we can get that water from point A to point B and get it, get it off a ten-year event off of the road, and so...
So, Shane, with that said, so your ten-year bond project, College here's, College Hills, Year Five, designed thirty percent, what are you recommending to us? 'Cause this obviously goes from a little bit of money to a whole lot of money, game plan?
In a real big hurry.
In a real big hurry. So, obviously, we gotta find a median point that we think we can live with, and that is...
Yeah, and this is, and this is what I wanna get into. What, what I'd like to do, and, and this is kinda, and, and again, uh, what I'd like to start doing is, we actually have a two thousand, uh, master drainage plan for the city. It was, it was done in two thousand, and it, and it identified in two thousand what, what all of our issues were in two thousand, and it also gave a price tag of the top twenty-five, what it would take kinda to start addressing those back in the year two thousand. Um, and, uh, you can see kinda down at the bottom, down at the bottom, what it looks like. Um, we have the, and it says fifty-four of the fifty-seven identified problems still remain. Well, fifty, um, fifty-five is actually College Hills. It hadn't been addressed yet, but we're starting to talk about it now, so, uh, we're, uh, we're saying, so we still have, uh, fifty-four of the original fifty-seven that were identified in two thousand that we haven't even touched yet. Uh, one, there's been no money identified to deal with drainage issues, so, that's something that we do need to discuss and start talking about, is how we're gonna start tackling those, uh, but also, when we look at it, um...
What are the sources for the money for drainage? I mean, we know, we understand streets.
Yep.
But when you talk about drainage, where are the various sources of revenue that we have in the city that would deal with drainage?
There are, currently, there are none. I mean, general fund, as of right now.
Just to be sure, we're all talking the same number.
Oh, oh, yeah. Stormwater can't be used for flooding purposes, it's, it's stormwater is only quality basis, based only, so...
As I recall, the, the last time council had a big discussion about this, the consensus at that time was that drainage projects should compete with other projects for general fund monies. And that's, that's where we are.
And that's where we, that's where we are today. But what, what I believe that we, that we should do, um, is, is update our, is update our master plan, our master drainage plan, uh, because we have seen substantial growth back to the Southwest. I actually pulled that up earlier today, uh, I think there's actually a slide up here that'll, that shows it maybe past this. Uh, you can see nineteen ninety-six up there versus in two thousand and three, 'cause we don't have one that was actually in two thousand, but you can look out there at, um, there is nothing really past Southwest Boulevard on Sherwood Way except the car dealership in nineteen ninety-six. All of where Tinseltown is, uh, Home Depot, Jim Bass Ford, the Bluffs, uh, you can see Bonham Elementary and the fire station out there, all by their little lonesome, nothing's out there. And so, and, and you move forward into, uh, twenty eighteen, and you can see all of the development that, that has been out there, that has compounded. You go back to the two thousand and three, you can see there's not even any houses built around Sunset Lake at that point yet, so, uh, just the amount of development that we have seen in the last eighteen to twenty years has been substantial in that part of town, and so, we're really seeing a lot of issues related to a lot of that development. So, I think, really, the, the most prudent thing for us to do would be to go back, update our master development plan. Uh, we have an RFQ that we've kind of already started the process of looking at doing this, and so, we'd like to get that on the, out on the streets really quick, update our master plan, uh, we believe the cost is probably gonna be in that two hundred thousand dollar range, but we can fund that through the stormwater program, because identifying those basins and those issues are something that we need within our stormwater quality program anyway. And so, we identify those basins, and we identify the issues that were coming out there. But we really believe that this College Hills staff believes, and again, we'll have to prove it through, um, you know, through engineering design and having the, and, uh, having all the hy- hydrology done in the area, but we really believe that we can help improve the situation on College Hills and the Arroyo by doing improvements upstream that are substantially at less, at a, at a smaller cost, lesser cost than what this estimate for College Hills, just dealing with College Hills alone was gonna be. And we could substantially improve all of the drainage issues coming down the Arroyo from there, other than just dealing with one specific roadway. So, we really believe from a staff's perspective that this is the way we need to go, uh, and, and hope council will support us in that effort to, to really move this, uh, this master drainage plan forward, uh, and at a fairly quick pace, because, uh, we're basically, at this point, gonna put the design of College Hills kind of on hold until we can start, until we can really address these drainage issues. And within that RFQ process and with the study, update, updated study, uh, as they're doing it, we would have them concentrate on the Arroyo and the effects of the Arroyo on College Hills and Sol Ross and downstream first, get us that data... Get us that data back so we can incorporate that into the design of College Hills, and so.
What kind of timeframe will it take them to do this drainage study?
The whole plan will probably take about twelve months, but we're hoping if they can concentrate on the Arroyo and get it done, we're, I'm hoping that they could get that done within, and everything back to us that we need for College Hills design within ninety to a hundred and twenty days is kind of what I'm hoping there, so. Kind of what I would hope, that they could really concentrate and focus in on this one specific aspect of it, and then we can look at the entire city as a whole after, after we really concentrate on the Arroyo.
But I, I don't want to assume this, so the question is, the benefit you said of doing the College Hills could ultimately save money. And my question is, would that hold true for the other areas around the city? Once they had, once we had the study, had it complete, that it could ultimately, once we have current data on drainage and flooding issues all over the entire city, that can have the same positive effect?
It, it, it could. This, this is one of those really rare, I mean, I'm not gonna say it's rare, but it, this is the one that really jumped out because of how big College Hills is, and we have two branches of the Arroyo that run through it. And a lot of growth has really occurred in the last twenty years down, or upstream of this that really affects this one specific thing. But what we would do would actually, any improvements that we could do that would help affect College Hills would also help everything downstream of College Hills as well, too, along the Arroyo. And so that would definitely be of great help. And from a savings standpoint, it, it's gonna cost money, no matter, anything that we do is gonna cost money. But I think we can see greater benefit with lesser dollars, building regional detention facilities upstream of College Hills, which don't cost near as much money as raising all of College Hills and building bridges and, and raising all of the, all of the other streets that, that intersect College Hills and raising all those streets and, and all the issues and trying to mitigate all of the issues that that's gonna cause. So I really think that this would be cost-effectively the best way to go. That being said, there's still not a funding source to deal with. I can get the plan, but there's still not a funding source to deal with those drainage mitigation efforts, even after we have the plan. So there needs to be some, something in place that can do it. One of the things that staff has thrown around, and me and Michael have been talking about it for actually several years now, dealing with drainage. And of course, it goes back to the prior councils wanted it to be a general fund issue. We did bring this up back in two thousand and ten, when we actually incorporated the stormwater, the stormwater program that we know today and the stormwater fee that we know, know today. We did approach the council at the time and ask them to, at that time, to make a separate fee that would deal with drainage, not quality. And the council at that time didn't want to even touch the quality one, and which is understandable, nobody wants an extra fee or anything like that. But our hands were tied, you know, from the unfunded mandate at the time. So council just passed the quality one and didn't address the drainage portion of it, the flooding portion of it. So one way to look at this would be to add an additional fee onto our stormwater bill that would address strictly drainage. It's not a popular idea, but it's one idea to actually find additional funding to start dealing with these drainage issues that there is not a funding source for. And as we're coming up on College Hills, there's not enough, there's not enough money set aside in the bond program to make these improvements for the drainage. I don't, I don't have an extra five million to put in the underground culverts from, from three oh six to the, to the, to the Arroyo. It's just not there in, in the existing funding structure that we have.
Let me ask this question. You alluded to this a little bit. But next year is the census. And once, once it's officially taken, this city is gonna be officially over a hundred thousand people, which affects some of the stormwater stuff that we do, including quantity. Is that correct? Reporting.
Quantity, quantity is, there is a little portion of it that, that can be attributed to quantity. And they are looking more and more at quantity as an issue within the quality program. Because when you start seeing flooding like in the Arroyo, when you look at that twenty-five-year process, anytime you're, you're flooding that much area and you're bringing it back down, well, you're just, you're gaining that, that much more contaminants as you're bringing it in. So flooding, yes, they are starting to look at that as that, but I don't necessarily know. Well, currently, there's not enough money within my current stormwater scenario to deal with these issues either.
I guess the point I was trying to make is, you alluded to prior councils not being willing to look at a fee for quantity. Is this something that we're gonna have to look at once the census is, is, is complete and we get to that spot? I mean, are we gonna be forced to get to that spot?
I don't, I, I don't, right now, I don't know that. I, I, they, there's been talk of it, but I don't, I, I can't tell you that right now. And luckily, luckily for us, I believe, and, and I guess Russell can answer that question, but from my understanding right now, that the permit that we currently entered into, just now, the next five-year permit, we're gonna be able to live in that permit through the next five years. So hopefully, we won't have to address this issue until we start getting into twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, I'm hoping, so.
Well, I mean, I think what, what we know today is we've got some future very expensive drainage issues. We probably ought to look at two or three sources and ideas in terms of how to fund it. I don't think we can resolve that today.
No.
But I think you need to have it out there as a conversation, knowing it's not gonna go away, and it will need to be addressed and figuring out what our options are. But obviously, the drainage study needs to be done.
Yes, ma'am. And, and again, I knew we weren't gonna solve anything today, but I did want to throw it out there just so everybody is aware of it. And, and we can start thinking in those lines as we're moving forward, going into, as we start looking, going into budget season and all those type of things. And we are looking at the College Hills project, moving it forward. Those are, those are just things that, the funding, the funding is gonna become an issue at some point for those drainage areas, and so we need to start looking at how we're gonna be able to, to fund those and, and, and make those projects move forward.
Being affected by growth issues also. I regularly hear about drainage coming across twenty-one oh five from outside the city limits, entering the city limits and affecting a neighborhood. Up on the north end, there's a particular shed that now regularly gets water in it, whereas in the past, it didn't quite so often get that. And so the, the circle of area that is being affected is growing. And so it's not just addressing this very kind of central problem. It's that, the problems are expanding as, as we grow and develop.
Where is all the time? I mean, we get phone calls, I know the city manager's office gets phone calls all the time about different areas that are starting to see drainage issues cropping up as, as we start growing and expanding.
Well, and as we had a hundred-year range, so whatever was out there, question mark would be, will twenty nineteen, twenty twenty have the same kind of issues? But obviously, we need to deal with the drainage issues, so.
Type issues, but some of them are planning issues where you, you hope to prevent those issues, but those become development headaches. And so preventing through planning regulation is also one way to help mitigate that. But it brings a different set of controversies with it.
Thank you, Shane. Any more slides? You wanted to leave us with the bad news?
Well, you know, we do have good news. We are making progress. I mean, we, we, we were standing still and now we're moving forward, so at least we're moving forward.
Thank you very much.
Damn, yeah.
Glad we did him first, huh?
Yeah. All right, so we've done streets and we've done drainage, is that right? Okay, so now we're gonna move on to water. And then we'll take a break.
Yeah, there's a lot of them you'll have to go through.
Okay. We'll start with good news. This is some slides that I've shown you all previously, but these numbers were as of yesterday. And I don't have what to compare them to, but we are still seeing increases in OHIV and twin buttes. This is the same slide I presented to you early February at the first council meeting. All I wanted to show here is that at February first, we were at sixty-six months of water supply. But with the reservoir levels still continuing to increase, they have slowed down a little bit in terms of how much they're gaining. But for the most part, IV and twin buttes are still gaining at a slow and steady pace. I do anticipate that the sixty-six months will continue to grow as, as we still see those increases. I wanted to kind of start with kind of the path forward for the utility. So one of the most important issues facing the utility is water supply. And we've talked about this continuously. But to meet future population growth, economic development needs, and diversification of our water supply portfolio, and to also position the city for the next drought, we are looking at pursuing the Contra River Water Project. And y'all have authorized to, to move forward with the two permits necessary for this project. But ultimately, just to remind the council and citizens that with this project, we can look at, according to Texas Water Development Board, meeting water supply needs through twenty seventy. But one of the most thing, or most common things I get taught or asked about is the cost of this project. And so this is a slide in dollar amounts shown to you all previously, but I just wanted to kind of reiterate that cheap water does not exist here in West Texas. And that the top four options as a part of the water supply feasibility study are shown up here. Three of them being some sort of reuse projects, one of them being a groundwater option. The groundwater option obviously yielded the least. But as you can see, the Contra River Water Project yields the most water at the lowest, one of the lowest unit costs and the cheapest annual operating cost of most all of these options. And the other thing that it also gets kind of missed over is that while this project is slated at a hundred and seventeen million dollars, ninety million dollars of that is towards improvement at both treatment facility, both at the water treatment and wastewater treatment facility. So if you say the groundwater option were pursued, that hundred and two million is just for the groundwater option. That doesn't address treatment and wastewater treatment needs. So you can add maybe not quite ninety million to that dollar amount, but you would still have very capital-intensive projects needed in addition to that one. So the Contra River Water Project kind of tackles several issues that are, need to be addressed specifically at the treatment facilities. We also will be moving forward with the Hickory Well Field expansion. Currently, the preliminary design phase is completed and is slated to be at the next council meeting for an overview of what that project, or what the outcome of that study was. But ultimately, we're looking at moving forward with the drilling additional wells, adding pump capacity, and increasing the treatment capacity. Just kind of reviewing that we're going from the eight million gallons to twelve million gallons to be able to utilize our full permitted capacity through the groundwater system. At the last council meeting, y'all made awards to three companies so that we can move forward with the Texas Water Development Board application process. And so we're working through that. And at the next council meeting, we'll be bringing back the next step, which is the engineering and design of the full system. So the preliminary design is done, and that's what's needed for the application process. Now we need those full bid documents, the specification, contract documents, all those type of things. And that's what the next task order will be used for. The picture's a little hard to see, and I was gonna see, oh, the laser works. Another item that kind of goes hand in hand with the Hickory Groundwater Development is the Ford Ranch. It is our intention to sell the ranch as soon as the improvements are done. Two pieces of property are listed currently. One is this portion up here. And there's another one not shown in red, but it's approximately three hundred and twenty acres. Both of those are listed. But once the improvements are done down in this area, drilling of additional wells, extension of those collection system, we will be looking at marketing the, the full acreage. I believe that the entire project is slated, the wells themselves will be drilled sooner than this, but the entire Hickory expansion, if we stay on track with the engineer's schedule, and they'll go into detail of that next council meeting, but I believe it's the end of twenty twenty-one. So the, but we can, I, I think that the expansion out at the treat, or out, out at the well field will happen. It will be starting first. And so we can obviously, once we get started with that project, we could list the ranch then. But we do want to get, you know, construction started out there, and that way we do know kind of an expected timeline that prospective buyers can know that we're, we're working towards, and we would have contracts with construction times and those type of things in place.
So twenty twenty earliest, twenty twenty-one, more realistic?
I think the end of twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, we should see the full expansion completed from out in McCullough County all the way to San Angelo. Sorry, I'll go back to the slide if there's any other questions relative to Ford Ranch. And then to kind of follow Shane's discussion on money, we want to talk about the financial condition of the utility. But really, we are in year four of a five-year rate plan. And we are seeing a, we are seeing our funds performing well. And we are above the seventy-five-day minimum cash on hand. But with that, there's several things that were included in the rate plan that haven't gone according to how the rate plan was going. So before, when we did the rate plan, we were supposed to already be issuing debt for that future water supply. That hasn't gone away, so that future debt has just been pushed back in several years. And also, the eighty million dollars worth of street program is bond-funded. There was no bond funding set aside or projected for infrastructure improvement. So while we see our fund balance increasing, especially with water sales being up as high as they were last year, we still have very intense capital projects that we're trying to cash fund, and we want to do that as long as possible. So just to show kind of our current projects, one being, the biggest one being Bell Street at twelve point two million dollars, and that's in both water and sewer. Contra Avenue, while it is one block, it addresses an eighteen-inch cast iron water main in that area, and so it was three hundred thousand dollars to address the water needs there. And then the sulfur draw sewer project at three point five million. But what we're hoping to minimize our debt service and to continue cash flowing as we can with the street program, I've put a list of upcoming infrastructure projects. Some of these align with the street program, but some of these don't. For instance, Brentwood Park, the Rio Contra Sewer Project. So we still have needs outside where the streets need to be redone that are also shown here, and these are, most all of these numbers are estimates just because they are, they haven't been bid out. But for instance, College Hills, we're looking at approximately four million dollars for water and sewer. And then you get down all the way to Water Treatment Plant Clearwell at nine million dollars. And this one will actually, we are working towards including this as a part of the Hickory expansion. The Clearwell is one of the older parts of our water treatment facility. And the Clearwell is, after water is treated, both at the surface plant and at the groundwater plant, water is blended from both those treatment facilities. It allows for that chlorine contact time before it is distributed out to customers. And regardless of what type of treatment processes we have upstream of that, the Clearwell is needed for any type of treatment facility. So while we talk about the Contra River Project, we would get upgrades to the Surface Water Treatment Plant. The water, or the Clearwell would still be kind of a plug and play. Whatever treatment facility would still feed into this Clearwell. And then the other one that is right above that is the Lake Nazworthy Sewer Project. It was also discussed earlier in this meeting. We have received the preliminary draft of the Lake Nazworthy Study. And we are gonna be bringing that to the March nineteenth city council meeting with that consultant. I will say that to address, I guess the biggest benefit would to be bring a trunk main up the river, technically, not in the river, but following the path of the river, to serve a larger area. So there's parts of San Angelo in that area, Butler Farms, Country Club, that we do not provide sewer to. Bringing this trunk main would allow, if, in the future date, to start expanding our sewer network. Bringing this trunk main would allow, if, in the future date, to start expanding our sewer network. But it would also come all the way up to basically Lake Nazworthy Dam where we could feed several of our lift stations to that trunk main versus sending it now where it goes near the post office and all the way back to the Red Arroyo. And because of that long detention time, we get the gas issues, the corrosion issues, those type of things. But I will say that's a $32 million project to bring that trunk main up, plus additional money to start diverting that, diverting flow to that trunk main. So, what we've asked the consultant to do is to say, maybe that option isn't completely feasible at this time, but to expand at the airport and to continue growing where it is on that south side of the lake, take the existing flow direction and increase in capacity. So, the line that goes across the lake, the force main that goes from the Bentwood Lift Station to the Red Arroyo, increasing capacity there. And they are putting numbers, it will be much less than $32 million. But in the grand scheme of things, it may not address the long-term issues. It may just address the more immediate needs. So, that one is something that we'll be discussing later this next month. And that kind of wraps up my update. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Allison, I don't, I'm not sure, maybe I missed it. But you were talking about the expansion project, the Hickory, and also the Contra River Supply Project. We're looking at addressing the needs of our community up to year 2070, is that correct? Is that what? Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that's, that was noted because that's something that we're, that we're really...
Right, with the combination of both of those projects, so the full build-out of the Hickory, the Contra River Water Project coming online, and then, under drought conditions with our surface reservoirs, we can continue to serve population growth, economic growth, those type of things to 2070. But it takes both of those projects to get there.
But that's good news. Any questions for Allison? Thank you very much. All right, you want to take a 10-minute break? Wonder if we should just... And so, we are going to have economic development presentation. We're going to start with, I think, John James with Development Services. John, you're on.
Yes, thanks. These first few slides, I'm gonna go through pretty quickly. You've seen some of this before, but I just wanted to go back to 2014, back when the department established some goals of what, how we wanted to improve the department. And the two I want to focus on are the first and last, the reducing the review times. And I'll get into that in a minute of how we've done that, and also ensuring consistency in the development review process. I'm not going to read through all of these, but we've, over the last few years, we've implemented a number of practices, including everything you see on the screen, but in the hopes of improving the development review process for the customers. We've also improved some of our internal processes, some of the most recent, the last couple of things there. We've streamlined our field inspection with our building inspectors. They have iPhones in the field now and can, as soon as an inspection is approved, they put it into their phone, and that gets sent right back to the office. And developers can know almost immediately that their inspections have been approved. And I'll talk more about this last one, the software improvements that we've made.
Is that that software that we bought and we now have installed, or is it something different?
Yes, yes, the plan review software. And I'll talk about how it's been working and the things that it's helped us do, especially in the last year. Some of the things we're looking forward to doing this year, creating a development handbook. We've updated a lot of our handouts, but we're looking at creating some flow charts and frequently ask questions to better help the customer, provide them more information. We've found that some of our processes, as you can imagine, are not always the easiest to follow. There are a number of steps that people have to walk through, especially for people who aren't everyday developers. I think we've done a pretty good job with them in helping them improve the process. But sometimes, it's just the homeowner who wants to do a carport who's never walked into our office before. We're still working on improvements to help those folks get through the process when they haven't done this kind of thing before. We're also looking at some ordinance amendments, some you've seen, some you haven't, but will be seeing. One, for example, just went to the planning commission last month, the parking ordinance. That will mostly reduce the amount of parking required for most new businesses and other kinds of land uses. As we looked and compared with other cities and around the country, we required, actually, we require about the same as most cities, but a lot of cities are moving towards requiring less parking to help businesses out. So, that's an example of something you'll be seeing. Also, we're, we've been negotiating with the county on a new ETJ agreement, basically, that will shrink the area within which the city's rules will apply for new development in the ETJ. I think it's a twofold focus. One is to ensure, we want to make sure that the areas we're truly going to grow into meet the city's standards and are built to city standards, even if they're not in the city limits today. But those areas way out of the city that aren't going to be in the city limits for 30, 40, 50 years, perhaps we don't need to hold those areas to such a high standard.
Are we gonna review that more today, or are you saying that's gonna...
No, that's upcoming. In fact, you'll be seeing that in the next month or two, come into a city council meeting. Also, talking about fee review, as we get into fee review for this coming year, we'll be bringing you some fees. As we looked at all of our fees, almost all of them are below 65% cost recovery. And as we understand, your goal is to get that closer to 100%. We're not going to get there in one fell swoop. But one of the things we've heard from the development community is they want us to incrementally increase fees over the years so that there's not a big jump in any one year. And so, that's what we've been doing the last couple of years, but we want to continue along that path.
Have those conversations gone on in the development task force meetings?
They have. In the past years, we've done that every year. We previewed that for them, I think, a couple of months ago. We're waiting to have a full, we haven't proposed exact fees yet, but that'll be going to them before it comes to you all, for sure. Also, one of the things we want to look at, you mentioned the software that we got almost five years ago now. When we got that software, we bought the software, but we've not upgraded it. There was no money set aside to upgrade that over time as new versions come out. And so, since it's been four or five years, we will be looking to upgrade some of that software to the newest versions. We're hopeful that we will be bringing you a revenue-neutral proposal that with fee increases will help offset the cost of that new software, or those upgrades, I should say. Since we've fully implemented the commercial plan review software, we've processed 82 projects of commercial building projects, and 98 projects, planning-related, like Platts, site plans, urban design reviews. And you'll see in a second how that's affected our numbers. But that's been very beneficial. I think our customers have appreciated the ability to, number one, upload their stuff online without having to bring plans in, but also to be able to track their process, or their progress through the process. Some of the other things that we've recently done are will be upcoming. We've updated our land management file. That's kind of a technical thing, but we've never had the ability for, say, a new address is created, you know, a new business is built, a new subdivision of homes goes in. We assign those new addresses, but those have, don't go into our water billing software, other software the city uses. Now, those two things are linked so that as soon as our GIS folks add a new address into our mapping system within a month, it will be uploaded to all of the other systems the city uses. Right now, as I mentioned, our software, we're looking at commercial projects. Later this year, we'll be expanding that to include new residential projects. And then, we're also working with engineering on things that they look at, like infrastructure plans, drainage plans. Those also going through that plan review software, probably in the next year. Now, here's the chart that I've been showing you the last few years to show our progress, going back to 2015. I think the one I want to focus on is the average review time. Back in 2015, we were looking at about 19 days for the average review time for a commercial building permit project. That's slowly decreased from 19 to 13 to nine. It's jumped back up a little, but that 11, actually, the first part of this year, that number was around 15. The latter half of this year, that number is about seven.
Why did it jump up to 15?
Well, I don't have a real good answer for why it jumped up. I do have an answer for why it went down to seven, is when we fully implemented the plan review software, that's created that efficiency that has got us on the track to keep that number low. Now, one thing I'll mention, I mentioned this last year when we got down to nine, in terms of the review time for these types of projects, and again, these are an average, we're about to the point where we've squeezed about as much as we can out of shortening those review times. In other words, we're about where we want to be. And so, I wouldn't consider the nine to 11, or even the 15. That's all within the ballpark of what we expect to see.
Those are working days, not actual...
Yes, those are business days. And then, one thing, when we looked at the previous slide, in the past years, we, looking at average, sort of hides some of the information we're actually wanting to show you. And so, we started looking at, how many reviews did we complete within our goal, which is three weeks? And you can see, from 2015, we were at 57% of our projects were reviewed and approved within three weeks. In 2018, last year, we got that number up to 80%. So, we've, I think we've done a good job in getting that...
With the same workload?
That number up.
Did it improve because there were fewer, because it looked like we were not consistent?
Yeah, you can see, it's actually gone up a little bit from 2015 to 2018. So, we've done that with an increased number of projects. And then, you can see likewise, the reviews that took three to six weeks, or more than six weeks, have gone down pretty consistently as well. Reviews taking over six weeks is only 8% of the projects that we see. So, again, I think we're moving in the direction that we want to be going in for those. Just briefly on the customer surveys, we send out customer surveys for the projects that we do. Of course, not all of them respond, but of the ones that do, this year, we got 98% of the respondents were pleased with the process that they went through. 95% of the respondents who went through one of our DRCs, Development Review Committee, or a consultation, said that it was helpful for their project, and they felt more comfortable about their project. This is something we've seen a big increase in. Those consultations are where we meet with the developer before the project begins. And we've found that the people who come in and meet with us and set up these meetings have a lot easier time going through our development process rather than those who just walk in with a set of plans and drop them on our counter. And so, as we've encouraged people to go through this process, the pre-development reviews, we've, I think that's helped in all of the other things that we do. 92% of the customers were extremely satisfied or very satisfied. And then, just a couple of quotes, we asked them for open-ended comments, and we continue to receive positive comments. And I'll just say, anecdotally, we don't really track this, but the number of phone calls that I get, people complaining about the process that they went through, has gone down significantly over the last couple of years.
What are the biggest hurdles that still exist?
That's a good question. It varies from project to project. I don't know if I could pinpoint one particular kind of thing. I think if we go back a couple of slides, you notice that about 2/3 of the projects we get don't require any revisions. It's those, the third, that do require revisions. People are submitting things that are incomplete, or they don't have all the information we need to make a decision. And so, again, that goes back to those consultations. If they meet with us first, and we lay out for them, here's all the information we're going to need from you, that has resulted in more people submitting those complete applications. But one of the problems we still have is folks coming in and not providing everything we need. So, then, they're delayed, having to go back to their engineer, or their architect, or somebody to get more information.
I'm actually taking advantage of that review process that they have. If they will do that, it will most likely always solve the problems ahead of time.
I think that's a quick overview. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them, though.
So, on the software, what are we looking at?
Well, like I said, the commercial plan review software is completely rolled out in all of the projects, as well as Platts and site plans. All of those are going through the software now. And so, one thing that means is when somebody submits a plan, it gets emailed out to all the reviewers, whereas before, there were a limited number of paper copies that got passed around. And so, now, everybody can review at once, submit their comments in, and then, those get compiled, sent out to the developer, and so, that's happening much more quickly. So, it's working like it's supposed to. There's one piece of the software that is basically at the end of its life. It's still working, everything's going well, but the company is no longer upgrading it, no longer updating it. And so, it's not a, it's not a critical issue at this point, but there'll be some point in the future, we'll have to upgrade that to a newer version. And so, that's, you know, one of the things I was, when I was mentioning, planning for that over the next few years, to upgrade those software packages to the newer versions. Another thing we're looking at, we've been working with IT at looking at going to some cloud-based services. We've, you know, right now, most of those software are hosted on our servers here at the city. But these software companies have packages that we can get that would allow them to host them offsite. That creates some benefits for us. It also creates some benefits for IT, not having to manage those servers and all of that. So, we're looking at a range of options, and we'll be bringing that to you sometime over the next few months.
Time is money for everybody. Thank you. Any questions from council? Yes. Oh, my microphone. Okay, can you hear me now? Okay, all righty, with no questions, thank you very much. And we're going to move into development projects, and I think that must be Guy Andrews.
Economic development and development services have to work hand-in-hand. So, I'd really like to applaud John and his staff for what they're doing. I participate in the development task force meetings. And having been in his position in another life for six years, I can tell you that they are doing everything exactly right according to what they should be doing. So, I appreciate that. You know, the main goal in economic development is to help create a community where people want to live and to do business. And that involves a partnership. I think that San Angelo has a very good partnership with our, all the various partners that are involved in that. It involves a lot of aspects. Unfortunately, economic development sometimes is a marathon. When we wish that we're a sprint, there are occasions where it is a sprint. Just a reminder, San Angelo is what we call a Type B economic development half since Sales Tax Organization. And the beauty of that particular arrangement, we chose wisely when we chose to do that, is it allows us to do economic development, which is what you traditionally think of in economic development of recruiting businesses and business retention, expansion, that same thing. But there's also an element of community development in that. Our structure allows us to support San Angelo strategic initiatives. And of course, in our region, in San Angelo, that involves food, fuel, and fiber. You've probably heard that someplace before. And our strategic initiatives are supported by transportation and industrial infrastructure that we have going. So, that involves our airport, our industrial park, and then, other intermodal transportation facilities. Now, when we talk about the aspect of economic development and the business recruitment, just remind you that we contract the business recruitment to the San Angelo Chamber of Commerce. We pay them $225,000 annually to perform that function. Little statistic, in the last five years, 21 businesses have been recruited through the Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Department. These businesses have added 401 jobs and $167,70,000 in capital investment to San Angelo. And the amount of incentives paid to these companies by COSA DC, is, anybody want to guess?
Zero.
Zero dollars. So, we get a lot of bang for the bucks, and we cherish that relationship with the Chamber of Commerce. In addition to that, because of the nature of who they are and go an extra mile, they've also created the SARMA organization, which is really business retention and expansion. And those two work together quite often, and that our business partners that are part of that SARMA organization help us recruit other businesses. We also don't want to forget our business retention and expansion efforts because we don't want to leave our businesses that are already here. we don't want to leave our businesses that are already here behind either. Let me back up for just a second and go back to what has happened with the, with the Chamber and their recruitment. In previous years, people said, we don't want to recruit oil and gas businesses, we don't want to deal with them in San Angelo. And I would just tell you that out of those 21 businesses that were recruited, nine of them were energy-related services, one of them was solar, the rest of them were that. Three transportation companies, and most of those were related also to energy services. A couple of construction companies, three manufacturers in the process, one food manufacturer, one healthcare business, and one aviation business. So, we're really covering the gamut of businesses. These are some of the projects that we've supported, our business retention and expansion. These are just estimated remaining balances for businesses that we've helped, so we need to consider that whenever we're expending our funds. There's also some upcoming business retention and expansion programs. Two of them were recently approved, the principal LED, that's paid out over a five-year period of time, Carter-Fentress Engineering. And then, we have some projects that are, will be brought forward shortly. Two of those are actually food processing businesses, a steel business, and then a internet-related We also are able to do some economic development studies, and we're proposing a couple of them. One of them is a housing analysis, it's in process, and a hotel analysis. In the housing analysis, what we're looking at is a comprehensive study of the housing needs of the city of San Angelo and our ETJ. And the need for this comprehensive housing analysis for San Angelo has been under discussion for several months with various stakeholder groups that have been impacted by the study. The purpose of the proposed study is to provide a credible third-party opinion concerning the balance of existing housing products relative to desired quantity, price type, and quantity mix. And this analysis investigates the nature and magnitude of demand for all types and prices of for-sale and rental housing deemed appropriate for San Angelo area. So, what the result of this study will be is that a developer or a home builder will be able to take this to the bank and have some empirical evidence about where housing needs are.
Do we have a timeframe on when that housing analysis will be done?
Yes. And we have actually already submitted a RFP for this. We've received four proposals. We've selected a vendor, the cost of that $65,000, Community Development Strategies. We've submitted agenda item for tomorrow for COSA DC to approve the contract. We submitted to council on, the next council meeting for ratification of that. I have recently talked to the people that'll be doing the study, and they can get started as soon as council approves it with the preliminary work, and they should be holding meetings with the community stakeholders in, sometime in April. One that I bring forward for consideration is a housing, or a hotel analysis as well, and this is about a $20,000 project. But the reason for that would be, well, hotel motel tax for one thing. If we're going to collect that, we want to make sure that we've got the right blend, that we've got enough hotels to meet that demand. So, some of the questions asked are, you know, how does the oilfield activity impact the hotel occupancy, like it did in the last boom? I think we're seeing increased convention activity that may have an impact. And, you know, do we have the newer hotels that people are looking for to meet that demand? So, something we're proposing. In terms of economic development, we have some ideas that, for consideration by council that we'll be bringing forward, airport exit beautification, Real Concho Drive pedestrian bridge, and monument enhancements along US 87. What we're proposing is, as you leave the airport, all you basically see when you're leaving there is a bunch of brush and that sort of thing. We've already actually talked to the Bureau of Reclamation that owns the property across from the airport, and they're thrilled to participate with us on this project in terms of doing the environmental studies and that sort of thing. We're looking to clear all of that frontage across from the airport as a first step in helping beautify that. There are other things that we'll look at in terms of that, but as a first step. Just got estimates on that today. That project should be less than $100,000 to, to clear all of that brush and replace a fence along there. Real Concho Drive pedestrian bridge, one of the things we want to do in economic development is protect the assets that make San Angelo, San Angelo. So, along the Riverwalk, when you, or along the hiking and jogging trail there, when you get to Concho Avenue, that dead ends, what we're proposing is to take that trail on, further go across underneath the bridge at Concho to the city park, over there, put in a bridge across to our other city park, which then connects you to additional trails. So, eventually, we'll have additional miles of, of trail that people can take advantage of. Some monument enhancements along 87, we're looking at that and those-
Gateways?
Gateways. And, and I don't want to say monumentation, because I was corrected on that one today. Anyway, the cowboy, I call that the cowboy with the saddle monument. The other one is known as a 200% wool that has the three sheep on that. So, what we would do, this is kind of low-hanging fruit, but in terms of that type of, of deal would be to have something that says, "Welcome to, to San Angelo," and to make those as gateways into our community. So, those two monuments as well. We do have some ballot projects that we are funding that are still remaining. Those are drawing close to an end on that. Our West Texas Water Partnership and Affordable Housing that we're funding. We have several infrastructure projects that are, sure, sure.
On the ballot projects, there is a large percentage of the half-sense sales tax money that goes towards water development, correct?
That's correct.
So, based off of that, what's the dollars that's, that have been used versus potential dollars to be used?
They're, for both of those projects, that they started out, I believe the West Texas Water Partnership was about $755,000. Affordable housing was allocated about three, a little over $3 million. So, those are the remaining ballots for those projects. So, as we-
For the life of the, because there's no sunset on it, so what's the parameter on time for those?
I'm not sure what, what those are on those particular ballot issues, but I can find that out.
Mayor, that, that was-
That one had a time limit on it.
That had a sunset built into it.
Okay.
Affordable housing's thirty years.
The, the West Texas Water Partnership portion of it-
It was a direct, a directive by council, and so there is no sunset on it. The bulk of the funding that comes on the ballot side in the development corporation goes towards funding debt service on the projects that were adopted by the ballot and also-
Including water.
And also to assist with the, the water debt service on the Hickory for long-term water supply.
So, with allocating funds for new projects, we need to take all of that into consideration and, and determine the amount of dollars that we have to spend for projects that might be arise. What we want to do is be prepared to, we talked about right up front about leveraging dollars, and so, we would like to be in a position to where our dollar, we can leverage our dollars with other dollars to help with, with some of the community development projects. We have several infrastructure projects that are going on, several million dollars in our industrial park. We do have a EDA grant that reduces those amounts, but we have several phases. We're looking at Airport Business Park Infrastructure, Chadburton Streetscape Project. I've mentioned the Concho River Bridge Project, that's estimated at about $250,000. And then, intermodal transportation facilities, which is yet to be determined. This is just a look at our business park expansions out there. We have several phases of expansion that are going in there to, to help improve our industrial park. We are a certified industrial park, and as, I think, as you see, the more people want to develop within the city limits due to our improved permitting processes and that sort of thing, I think we'll start to see more activity. And we're beginning to advertise this one better as well. Airport Business Park, right now, we have master plan consultant that we paid $120,000 for. We estimate that phase one infrastructure cost to be about $2 million.
Is that inside the fence or outside the fence?
This is outside the fence. Inside the fence is, is a different project, although it's the same consultant. So, talking about the future Airport Business Park, this just shows you the area that that is in. And this was just an early, kind of preliminary drawing to show the, the types of things we might have planned to attract businesses into that park. In terms of other infrastructure projects, we've committed $3,750,000 or $750,000 per year for five years to the Chadburton Streetscape Project. And as you know, that goes in diff, there are three different phases of that. This is Phase A of that, from the river to Borghart Avenue. In terms of our intermodal transportation facilities, we actually have contracted a consultant to work on that aspect of it, and what his job is right now is helping determine the demand for those types of facilities and looking for potential vendors that might provide that type of facility and operate it. And then, one of the last things that we're doing, we work with the Small Business Development Center, and every year, we hold a business plan competition, and just want to let you know that that kicks off May the 6th of this year. So, be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Do we have questions from council? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And did that, was that inclusive of commercial development?
The commercial development mainly takes place through the chamber, so that's when we're talking commercial. I assume that's what you're talking about, with new businesses coming in.
So, Michael's going to do the next one?
No.
Okay, so we're done?
Yes.
So, all of this is done then?
It's already done, so we're moving on to-
Okay. All right, we're going to move on to public safety, and the first will be our police. So, we have Chief Carter here. Oh, you did? Did I, did I shut you down?
No.
I'd show rather quickly, and if you have any questions, feel free afterwards or during. We'll start out with the staffing levels of 2019. Our authorized sworn is 175 by council.
We need to get the thing, now we got it.
There we are. Current sworn authorized 175, that increased over the last two years, which is 165. So, we're still tracking on the goal that I had, which was five officers for the four-year term. Currently sworn, 177 officers to date. Keep in mind, when you see that number, the 10 are graduating the academy Friday after next, and 13 were just hired, will start the academy the following Monday. FBI recommendation, 1.79 officers per 1,000 citizens. That's basically 188 authorized police officer positions. International Chiefs Police Association recommendation, 1.9 officers per 1,000 citizens, that's 200 authorized police officer position. That current estimate population is at 105,000. Our current ratio is 1.60, 1.66 per 1,000 at 175 authorized officers.
So, when the 10 start, that will bump that up from 1.67 to?
With the 177, which we have now, which includes the 13 we just hired and the ones that are graduating-
Or graduate the academy.
We will be at 1.66.
Okay. Well, the 10 that are about to graduate on next Friday, I think you said, what's the diversity makeup of that group?
Basically, our demographics. We, we just got through looking at this, as far as the blacks, Hispanics, and whites, and, and we're on track as far as the number of citizens that we have or officers that we have hired, based on our demographics. So, several females, Hispanics, and, and one black. With this being said, it's short-lived. I know of five officers that'll retire within this year, three of which are 30-year-plus employees, two of them are supervisors. The remaining two are retired military with over 20 years with the service with the San Angelo Police Department.
Sorry, did you say you had any more time? Eddie, here.
How many? Going to be? Use of additional personnel that you gave us, those 10 extra bodies over the last couple of years, we implemented an anti-crime unit consisting of one sergeant and three detectives, add an additional crime, child crime detective to increase responsiveness and proactive address crimes against children, add an additional detective to Criminal Investigation Division, increase training staff by one additional instructor, and the rest went to patrol staffing, where currently answer over 100,000 calls per year. The officers and civilian staff are doing a phenomenal job, and when you combine that with extra manpower, this is what you get. San Angelo experiencing overall 26% decrease in crime in the last two years. Future projects, body worn cameras, estimated $160,000 a year over five years. I know that number looks large, but that is an actual full rollout, which includes not only the body worn camera, but the TASER and the in-car video system. We are currently outdated on our video in-car systems. We're actually buying leftover stuff, or stuff that people of other departments have gave away, if you will, and we're buying it off eBay. Our, our in-car video system is basically obsolete. That in-car video system alone is about $5,000 apiece. We have roughly 100 and 102 marked units that this will be affected by.
Technology necessary to support all that?
It does. And that's where the expense comes in with TASER. A lot of the equipment is provided. It's your licensing fees and storage space for the cloud. And they guarantee it, if it breaks, and after a certain number of years, they'll actually replace it. So, it's kind of like a lease-to-own type deal, but that's a full rollout for, for all three, the TASER and the body cam.
And that's $5,000 a car, is that what you said?
Yes. Long, long-term, over a five-year period, it'll actually be a savings. We're purchasing TASERS now, they're about $1,500 apiece. We've got a grant, which Nolan might speak about, $20,000 grant, and I bought 12 TASERS, so it gets rather expensive in a hurry. The five additional officers for a total of 180 sworn. Again, I touched on it, that was my original goal, and y'all stood by that up to this point. We've increased 10 bodies thus far, so we're halfway through that commitment. Research and financial impact of adding an additional step for the ranks of lieutenant and sergeant, I'm specifically talking about the loyalty pay. Seek out location for the new police headquarters. Moving portion of the department personnel to the second story of the, the City Hall Annex Building. It will allow us to vacate the Community Service Building on South Chadburton.
I thought we were way beyond having that done. We talked about this a long time ago.
We have. And it, we've been talking about it for a year and a half, I think. It's just been kind of one thing after another.
Can we get an update on that?
First, it was some construction, some, some minor construction. Then, it was fiber optics, and then it was asbestos cleanup, and now that's where we're back to. So, I've been told it's going to council in March, the first part of March, for the remaining funds, I believe.
We've identified internal savings to fund it, but it, the cost is to remove this as, I don't know if it's technically asbestos, but it's been advised to treat it as asbestos. But in order to remove that and put the walls back together, it exceeds 50,000. I think the estimate is, is it 60 or 60?
Just below 60, with some additional cost per square foot for ceiling tile if they're damaged during the process.
And so, that requires council approval, and so, that's on the next agenda?
Yes. And, and they- And, and they are moving, they are, when you talk about moving a portion of the staff into an area that didn't have any asbestos in it, and the other, I was telling Frank earlier, I think between a month and six weeks to get that work done when we start. We have a contract in place through TIPS, or available through TIP, which is one of our co-ops. So we've got that ready to go, and legal's helping with the contract. And if council approves that, we'll move forward, and should see action by the end of March.
Have we done any of the remodeling of that space up there?
Yes. And that's where some of the, the vermiculite in the wall was found when we did that. So, but the part, Police Department maintenance personnel did painting and removal of some shelving and put in furniture. And so, yeah, and then we kind of had to come to a standstill when we found the asbestos. So should finish that pretty quickly, and they should be totally moved probably about May, maybe June, because the furniture is there. It's maybe protected during the vacating process.
Any questions?
Straightforward.
Always.
You would see that we got the copies of the presentation?
We'll get those after you, as soon as we finish on this.
We'll get them to us tomorrow. I mean, we don't have to have them tonight.
Yeah, it is, I'm not in that big a hurry, but some of the statistics that they have, I'd like to be able to share with people I talk to in the community.
We'll do. We'll get that to you.
We didn't have all this in the background material. Thank you.
Welcome. Chief Dunn.
Is Anthony running that, or am I running it?
Go your on.
Go backwards. Hit the button, down button.
Keep going. There we go. All right. Just keep going. I can do that. The six frontline ambulance, the personnel, this is some of the projects that we started a couple of years ago. The six frontline ambulance personnel were hired in December of 2017. They will finish their training in May of this year. And as soon as they graduate their training and we get them certified, they will be headed for Station 4 to man that ambulance that hopefully will be open at the end of April. That's when we think it's on track to be open out there. And once that station's opened, there'll be a manned firetruck and ambulance running out there. And that station will be the one that's just a couple blocks off the south entrance of Goodfell Air Force Base. The safer grant personnel that y'all approved last fall were hired February 1st. They'll be, they won't complete their training until about June of 2020. These personnel will bring, ascend to compliance with Staffing Apparatus and make the, the safety on those vehicles safer for firefighters. So those are projects that are, that are ongoing and will, will complete. The two new engines that we brought to council there last month, you see, they are now outfitted and responding from their respective stations, Engine 2 off South and Boulevard. And we're running the new Engine 4 out of the old training facility since it's the only, it's where the old Station 4 is, but it, the Station 4 engine bays are not big enough to accommodate that engine. So we're, those guys are walking down to the deal to run out of there. And they've got that all set up to, to do that. Ambulance, ambulance unit, hour utilization, the metric to determine the ambulance needs, those are the ranges. Point 1624 is your ideal commitment range. And then we are now, when that sixth frontline ambulance goes into place, we'll be at point 2689, which will be better than what we were before. We've had a couple, we had a little bit of improvement. One, we had introduced a little bit of technology, and Mason Matthews had went around, and we redefined how stuff was entered in there. So we actually saved time, which helped bring that number down. So we're not over the point three like we were before, once this goes into, well, that's a good thing. We're still running the peak ambulance right now. If you leave that in service, we would drop to point 2531. If you wanted to keep it in service, that would be the amount of overtime, depending on whether you wanted to run it eight hours a day, five days a week, or nine hours a day, seven days a week. Right now, we're currently running it nine hours a day, seven days a week, to offset those runs without that other ambulance. Training facility, we are continuing to ramp up our training out there. We're, we have Teaks and Tedom bringing in almost every month, where we have them come in, and we're providing training to our personnel.
I noticed on the news this week that Denton opened up a huge, big fire training facility, massive new fire training facility.
Their, their land is a little bit smaller than ours. That was actually there last March in 2018. I got to tour it then. So I don't know what they, whether they were finished or not, but we did tour that when I was up there.
Well, it was on the news, and they showed a lot of photographs of it. And just wondered if that was gonna have an impact on the amount of people who want to come down here for training.
I don't think so. That's not the people that we're getting out here in the west with Teaks down at College Station. The people that we're getting, there's very little to the west of 35 here. So the people that we're getting is in this area, is towards this side of the state. Teaks has, has been visiting with us. I think they've talked about wanting to do some partnership-type stuff with us because there's not any larger training facilities in this side of the state. And like I said, we've been, we got another, we just had them sign up. We got a G 230 and 231, or hopefully 231 class. 230's already coming in March. That is for wildland firefighting, so we'll probably have quite a few people from the area that come in to, to get that. We're hoping to get the back half of that on the 231 class, right behind it in there. But every month, we got some kind of training that's being provided to a regional. We will do an area school in the fall, which generally in the past, when we did them back in the 90s, we usually had between 100 and 150 area people come in to get training for that. Future issues for us, I got a letter from IT here a couple of weeks ago. Microsoft is discontinuing support of some of their operating systems in January of 2020, and they're telling me we need about $85,000 worth of software to remain HIPAA and CEGIS compliant for our equipment. I'm guessing that about every seven to 10 years is when they discontinue IT. You probably answered that question a little better, but that seems to be the lifespan on their operating systems. And when they discontinue the support is when they'll make you non-compliant. The second issue, this is not mandated yet, but I expect this to probably be mandated within three years. They've been talking about this on the national level and the state level, about requiring a second set of bunker gear for firefighters because of the exposure on the fire scenes. And when they actually do have something, so that they have a second set to put on while we send the other stuff. We have extractors or cleaners, but to have them something else to wear while we're cleaning that, and have a, have a dry, clean set of gear to put on. If they mandate that, the cost for that will be somewhere between $60,000 and $70,000 per year. In their infinite wisdom, about 10 years ago, the commission adopted a deal. So now every set of our, every piece of our gear has a serial number and an expiration date on it at 10 years. So we're forced to purchase that.
Love those unfunded mandates.
More of them. That's it for me.
Any questions? Thank you very much. All right, we will move on to the last item, this workshop itinerary, and it is establishing confirming priorities for 2019 and 2020. Let me just recap what I say, is I think our, our current priorities are correct priorities. And as Billy and I discussed earlier, you can't exist without water. It's the number one issue. And so we've got to make sure that what we do is focus as a priority, water. And certainly, next, of course, is streets and drainage. So I don't think any of that has changed in terms of any of our needs. And I also say the only way we get more money in order to do all this is to continue focusing on economic development, because you got to bring more revenue in in order to fund the projects. So I look at as, this council's made some wise decisions in terms of setting the priorities. I can't imagine we would change up those priorities. With that, meeting adjourned, if you vote to.
That's it.